Good evening and welcome to the Crestwood School Board's Study Session for tonight. And we will be discussing the public, this will be the public forum for the tentative Reintegration Plan 2021, and I will hand it over to Dr. Musalem.
Good evening, community. Good evening, Board of Education. I appreciate everyone for being here this evening, and I appreciate everyone's patience during this process. Before I get directly into the Reintegration Plan, I would like to take a moment to let everyone know that through our process of hearing and listening to all of our stakeholders, our community members, our staff, the Board of Education, this administration team, and the subcommittees, I'm sorry, Trustee Barry, did you?
I forgot to ask for a roll call.
Oh, my apologies.
I'm new to this. Thank you, Ms. Janoon, if you don't mind.
Hello.
Here.
There's Ed.
Hey, Ed.
Hello. Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Okay, Ed, we're gonna do roll call, and then you can take over. Dr. Musalem is taking over.
Thank you.
Ms. Elzayat?
Here.
Ms. Hawaz?
Here.
Mr. Garcia?
Here.
Myself, Ms. Kaminsky?
Here.
And Mr. Sabah?
I'm here.
Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Madam Vice President, for calling the meeting to order, and Madam Secretary for taking role. I believe at this time we have a, I'm sorry, presentation that is being made to the general public of the Crestwood School District for the Tentative Reintegration Plan for 2021. Dr. Musalem?
Thank you, Mr. President. See, that's a true example right there of why we're a team. We all got each other's back there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, back to, you know, I want the community to know that the Board of Education, this administration team, the subcommittees, the teachers, everyone, we've been hearing you, we've been listening, as well as to our teachers, and all in this process. As I mentioned in my video, no matter what decision that we decide to make as a unit, not everyone's going to be happy with the decision. We understand that. But our ultimate goal is to make a decision that is in the best interests for our community, our students, that is safe for everyone, safe for our staff, as well as giving our students an opportunity to have the highest education as possible. And before I get into this quick PowerPoint presentation, there's two things I would like to state. First and foremost, I want to thank the Board of Education. What people don't understand, and I've said this before, and I will say it again, there are seven members of this Board of Education currently, and seven members of the Board of Education previously when this pandemic started. All of these members of the Board of Education, whether with us now or were with us in the past, have been working diligently to support our district in making the best decision we can make for our students and our staff. People don't know the work the Board of Education does behind the scenes. Okay? They are silent warriors. So, I want to just take this opportunity to thank the Board. I'm not saying that just because, you know, the seven of you are technically my bosses, but because you have made this process easier for myself, our team, to work in order to get us to where we are today. The second point I'd like to put across before I go through the PowerPoint presentation is, last week, as we promised, we shared with all of our stakeholders the tentative reintegration plan. And we emphasize tentative because nothing is written in stone. This is a process. And we shared it via email blast, as well as on our website and our social media platform, our Facebook page. We wanted to give the community an opportunity to review it. We also shared an email that we stated, and our phone number so that, you know, community members could call and ask questions. We received several questions, great questions. We also received some commentary from community members, which please know, we are taking seriously. Through all this process, I created a short PowerPoint presentation that I'd like to take a few minutes to present to the community and to the Board that answers many of these questions, as well as takes that document that we sent to you with the tentative plan, and breaks it down to a point where we can explain and have everyone hopefully understand a little more clearly on what our tentative reintegration plan is. So, without further ado, I would like to start that presentation. I will be sharing my screen so that you can see exactly what it is I'm going through. And then, once after today's board meeting, this presentation will be shared on our website as well, so others can go through it and look at it again. I keep using the word share, and I just clicked the share button. Okay. So, just a quick timeline. On February 1st, we shared the plan with all community. Today, we are going through a public study session to discuss the plan. On the 10th, which is two days from today, we will be sending surveys to individual families for them to make a decision between continuing with the online instruction or following through on face-to-face hybrid instruction. And today's presentation is to discuss what that is. On February 16th, we will be able to correlate and condense the numbers, which will help us determine further how our plan will be implemented. That will be shared with the Board. And then, technically, on February 22nd, February 22nd, I want to make sure, can everybody see the Okay. Trustee Barry, can you see the plan? Me presenting it, is there an issue or no?
It was on before, now it's not.
Okay, give me one second. Now is it back on?
Yes, just maximize your screen.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. And February 22nd, as we all know, by law, every 30 days, we must, the Board must vote on moving forward with their plans, so on and so forth. And there will have to be a vote on February 22nd for the Board to make a decision, and I'll go into more detail on that in the presentation. On February 22nd, there will be some options. The options can be maintain current status, adopt a new plan, or adjust current status. Or there could be a number four here, and it could be something completely different. But we have time, and that's why we're going through this process. Because as we know, COVID-19 is not predictable. We cannot predict what's going to happen tomorrow. So, what are some of the key points to the tentative plan? First and foremost, parents will have a choice. Parents will have a choice between 100% online instruction or hybrid instruction, which is a combination of online instruction and face-to-face instruction. Students will be placed into two groups, Group A or Group B. I will go into further detail on this in a moment. Another key point to the tentative plan is that instructional time for all students will be the same. So, no matter if you are, if you're, if you choose 100% online instruction, or if you choose hybrid instruction, this will be your start and end times for instruction per level. So, high school, 7:45 to 12:55; middle school, 8:10 to 1:40; elementary, 9:00 AM to 2:15. Through these staggered times, it allows us to support with transportation, and it allows us to create consistency for parents. So, if they have high school-aged or middle school-aged children that they need home in order to support them with elementary children, they will be home prior to their elementary children coming home. Also, instruction, no matter if you're 100% online or hybrid, will be a combination of live stream as well as independent learning. Synchronous is known, live stream is known as synchronous, and independent work is known as asynchronous. So, if, to create an understanding of what you're doing now, lunch and breakfast will still be provided for all students, and there will be opportunities for students who need additional support. So, why hybrid if we're less than 30%? This was a question that came across. Even if we are less than 30% or 30% or less of our students want hybrid instruction, the question was, well, can't we just have the students come to school every day? The reason why we can't have the same, we still have to have a Group A and a Group B, is because it's not guaranteed that every individual class will be below 30%. So, if I give you an example, it could be that, you know, Mrs. Berry's class may have 30% of her kids who choose the online, but Mrs. Janoon's class, the families may be 60% who choose online. Therefore, we could have a disparity on how the students are broken up. Moreover, if we continue with an A group, B group, it gives more flexibility for teachers to help kids in small group instruction, as well as it gives them flexibility to support within person. So, therefore, by maintaining an A group and a B group, it allows for teachers as well as logistics to support the students. So, if we were to go to, you know, face-to-face, the students that would be face-to-face will be, will have to follow a certain set of rules and guidelines. And these rules and guidelines are going to be in place to ensure that we can follow through on the CDC guidelines for a safe environment. There will be no locker use, so students would have to carry their backpacks from class to class. Drink and fountains would be shut down. There will be specific and established times with limited students to use restrooms. So, it won't be where students can go use the restroom whenever they like. We're going to have specific times when they can be used, and how many students can be in there at the same time. There must be a six feet of separation at all times. Masks must be worn all day except while eating lunch. There will be no congregating in the hallways or passing areas. This is tough for high school kids, because you know, at passing time, you want to get together and talk. It's not going to be allowed. There will be constant pre-checks for fever and illness. There will be quarantined areas for school, quarantine areas of the school for children who've become ill or seen ill. And if any child is ill when in school, their parents will have to pick them up immediately. At the end of the school day, during that instructional time, students will have to exit the schools immediately through pre-arranged doors by pre-arranged staff, and it'll be a staggered entry and a staggered exit. For students on the bus, there must be, you must wear a mask through the entire bus ride, and students will be sitting in a zigzag formation where in turn, no students will be sitting directly in front of or behind another student, and there will be only one student per seat. We will use restorative practices to support students who adhere to the rules, but if, after the first, it may be second time of trying to get students to adhere to the rules, they can be asked to leave the face-to-face instruction and to stay home. And this is for the safety of all students, and because we have to take this very seriously. So, what does it look like? So, some of the questions we asked, if I choose hybrid, what does it look like for me as a student? Well, here's an example. If I'm in the Group A, I would be face-to-face on Monday, I would be online Tuesday, face-to-face Wednesday, online Thursday, and face-to-face on Friday. And then, the following week, nothing would change except for Wednesday. And then, every other week, so the only change between Group A and Group B would be on Wednesdays in order to create consistency for everyone. So, if I'm in Group B, same thing, except now you see it's flipped. While Group A is face-to-face on Monday, Group B would be online Monday. Again, Wednesday's being the only day that there's a change. Students will be placed into groups to ensure we can meet safety standards. If we run a two-group schedule, again, the only day that will change is Wednesdays. Face-to-face assigned days will not change other than a Wednesday. I want to reemphasize that. And the key thing here is, there will be five days of instruction for all students. If I'm a student who chooses online only, then that's all it is, is online. Now, something to make clear is that when we look at this scheduling, what we have to understand is that no matter what, if I am face-to-face or online, no matter what group I am part of, online, Group A or Group B, instruction will be the same all five days. It'll be live-streamed, synchronous, direct instruction, and then the teachers will be breaking up that hour, or that day, or that lesson into small breakups where in turn, just like we do now, we may have a group of students who are working with the teacher online for a few minutes, and then those students would go and work on something when the teacher with them go work with the students that are in the classroom. So, the teachers know that they're going to have to adjust, and that it's going to look a little different, but they're still going to follow the same format they're following now. But what safety measures have we put in place? Well, we have social distancing tape, adult plastic dividers. And what that means is that, like, for example, for elementary schools, they're called like the kidney tables, where students have reading groups. There will be adult plastic dividers there. We're doing additional sanitation and regular contact surfaces. Like I said, regulated restroom breaks. Lunches will be served in multiple areas, large spaces, cafeteria, and classrooms, and we will be serving bagged lunches. We will be adding air purifiers to rooms that do not have a natural ventilation, such as a window. We will have quarantine rooms, pre-check systems. We will be following contact tracing. We are partnering with local authorized service providers for COVID-19 testing, and we're following the mandated COVID-19 instruction and training. So, when we look at instructional time, what are some of the differences? Well, when we look at currently in elementary, young fives through grade four on average have about 173 minutes per day for five, it's about 865 minutes per week currently. Okay, this is on average, 865 minutes per week. It's different for each grade level, because each grade level's doing something a little different, but I just took an average where, sorry, this should say, it shouldn't say current, my apologies. This should say proposed. We would go from 865 minutes per week on average to 850 minutes per week on average. So, we'd be losing about 15 to 20 minutes per week on average of instruction time from the current to the proposed schedule. For middle school and high school, middle school, we would actually gain, we would actually gain 105 minutes in middle school with the proposed schedule compared to the current schedule. And in high school, we would lose approximately 40 minutes of instructional time per class, but this is under the preface that during the block scheduling in the high school, the teacher is seeing the student the entire time. Moreover, because of the trimester, there's that additional time added in the current schedule because they're block scheduling, where if we move to proposed schedule, instead of it being a block schedule, they would be seeing the students every hour, every day. Also, to keep into consideration, this is our remaining school calendar, okay? In the month of March, trimester three begins on the 15th, and then we have spring break from March 26th to the 2nd. So, we have six days of no school in March. In April, we have one day of no school, and Ramadan starts on April 12th. In May, we have four days of no school, as we have three days for the Eid holiday break, and we have a Memorial Day weekend, as well as the 20th is the last day for seniors. And then, we, last day of school for all students is June 11th. We have pushed back the possible tentative return dates because of the vaccine. Vaccine completion will be March 6th. Our teachers were vaccinated this weekend. March 6th and 5th are the second doses. Therefore, it is recommended that after the second dose of the vaccine, that we take some additional time. And by pushing this tentative return date back, we are looking at a tentative return date for pre-K through 4th grade on March 15th, that same time, a 5th grade and 9th grade orientation for all students, online or face-to-face. The week of March 22nd, 7th, 8th, and 10th grades, then we would go into spring break. We would come back from spring break. We would take two weeks of online learning for students, and then April 19th would be 11th and 12th grade. So, real quick, some questions that were asked that helped clarify some other issues. Groups A and B will be separated first by home address and last name. The reason we're going to do this is because we don't want a family with multiple children to have their kids going to school on different dates. So, we'll separate Groups A and B by home address, and then by last name. We will then dig even deeper to identify where those students are in the classroom to ensure that we can have a balanced A group and B group that are face-to-face for the teachers, so we're not overwhelming the teachers as well. Additionally, the hybrid model means that all instruction will be live-streamed, so those that choose hybrid will have days of instruction at home and days of instruction in the classroom at school. So, if there is, God forbid, another shutdown, nothing will change. The schedule will remain the same, but all of our students will be home during that schedule. Again, if it's less than 30%, then we're still going to maintain the two groups, but we'll have much more flexibility. If we have more than 50%, we will have to possibly go to three groups, a Group A, a Group B, and Group C. Can we split students between an online teacher and an in-person teacher? The answer is no, because this will displace students from their current teachers in the elementary. Moreover, if we follow the hybrid model, logistically, we cannot meet the needs of the students in the secondary. So, even then, if we do it, we're still going to run into logistical concerns, plus scheduling will be very difficult. Will the plan be for the remainder of the year? At this point, the answer to that is yes. It will be to the remainder of the year unless there is a major spike. In cases, then we just have to go to full online again. But we have to keep in mind that this plan is fluid. It will change based on the needs in order to contain a safe environment. And I know this is a big question in everybody's mind. Well, what's going to happen in graduation this year? What I can tell you is that our team, Mr. Fabrice and his team, are already planning graduation in a manner where we will be able to hold a graduation ceremony, broken up into possibly multiple ceremonies, so that parents and students can actually have some form of graduation this year. And to sum it all up, what it really comes down to is, when we send the individual surveys to the family starting on Wednesday, it's imperative, and it's important, that families complete those surveys. We will be sending those surveys electronically as a Google document that they will have access to, but we're also sending every family a hard copy. And when you read the hard copy, it will say, if you've completed the online survey, no need to complete the hard copy survey. We're doing that just to make sure that everybody gets a copy of the survey. When we narrow that information down, we'll be able to see, okay, what's our percentage of families that want hybrid, what's our percentage of families that want online. That'll also allow us to narrow down this plan to fit the needs of the numbers. No matter what we do, we're going to have to have an hybrid version and an online version. What is key and crucial, and the reason why we went the direction with this plan, is because the idea behind it is that instruction will continue no matter what happens with COVID. But, please know, when we have those numbers, we could come back and say, you know, let's look at what we're doing now, and maybe just adjust it. Or, we will be saying, okay, we have to look at an A group, B group, because our numbers are so large for the number of families that want to send their children back in a face-to-face manner. I hate to say this, though, there's going to be no way to look like a normal, traditional school until the fall. Because until we get to the point that our nation and our, and the world has control over this virus, we're not going to be able to go back to a traditional setting. And finally, when the subcommittees and I discussed in all the different aspects of this, we wanted to identify what's our purpose. You see, because we can talk about coming back to school, not coming back to school, but what's our purpose? Why do we want the kids to back to school? And the number one purpose that everybody discussed was because our kids need that social-emotional. They need that, that, that environment. They need to be back with their peers. So, when we thought about all that, that's what led to this tentative plan, because it gives the kids that opportunity. And I can tell you, our, there's a huge group of teachers and social workers and special ed teachers and English language learner teachers who are looking at not just the academics, but also the social-emotional growth. So, hopefully, in that presentation, I was able to answer a lot of questions. And I wanted to prepare that and present that before I opened it up to questions to the Board as well as the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Musalem. I appreciate that. I definitely appreciate the time and the effort that you've put into making this presentation on behalf of the Crestwood administration staff and those that participated in your committees. At this time, what I'd like to do is give the opportunity to have any members of the Board of Education address concerns, comments, and those can be directed to our superintendent, and then I believe from there we can open that up to our community for questions and comments. So, at that time, at this time, I'm sorry, do we have any questions from any members of the Board?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Barry.
I just wanted to reiterate that when Dr. Musalem is talking about what isn't allowed, the reason is for safety. You know, the drink and fountains are not allowed because of safety reasons. Congregating because of safety reasons. All those things are to keep everybody safe, to keep the numbers down. It's not that the district is being harsh on students or anything of that nature, just to understand that safety is our first priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Barry.
Your, your comment is greatly appreciated, and I believe I did make a note here that that is a number one concern, and thank you, Dr. Musalem, who also stated that the school is definitely not going to appear the same that it has in the past. So, duly noted and for this. My apologies, because I'm unable to view at this present time, so if you just can tell me you have a question, I can go ahead and call you, Mr. Sabah.
Yes, thank you so much. Dr. Musalem, thank you. I know how hard you and the entire team worked on putting this together. As a trustee, you know, our main objective is to ensure that the entire student population is safe. As a father, I'm concerned about my four children. I am all for the socio, the return for socio, you know, social reasons for these children. I'm fully behind it, and I love the plan. I think it's a great option for many parents. I've heard feedback from many parents that some don't want to send their students back, and others do. So, having said that, I just wanted to thank you and the committee, and I know how hard this is, because obviously, like yourself, talking to other people from other school districts, everybody's struggling with this. So, thank you for all the hard work you put into this.
Thank you, Justice Barry.
Okay, and what I can do is just follow down the line. Mrs. Elzayat, are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, Dr. Musalem, thank you so much. This is, I'm very familiar with plans, as you know, safety plans. I'm heavily involved in the My Return to School Plan, and you guys did a wonderful job. This, and I know for everybody watching at home, or everybody who's looking at this plan, I know that in your mind right now, it seems like it's going to be a little bit chaotic, but please keep in mind, our kids are resilient. You give them a schedule, and they can follow their schedule. And I know that most kids at home are actually showing their parents how to get online, or show them their schedule, or what time they're supposed to be on. So, I have a lot of confidence in our kids, and that they'll be able to follow this schedule. Everything looks great, and I just thank you to the entire team for putting this together.
Thank you, Trustee Elzayat.
Yes, very well. Thank you. Mrs. Hawaz?
Good evening. Thanks for, again, I share everybody's sentiments. Thanks for doing that. I guess one question would be, for the children, the parents that have multiple children, obviously, I'm assuming they'll just get different surveys in the event that they want, you know, their elementary student to go, but not, you know, maybe their junior high or high school student to go, right?
Correct. In the survey that would, that everyone will receive, it will state in there to complete a survey for each child, and so they can make a different choice for each child. The one that's going to go home, that the paper copy says in there, just fill it, one survey out for all your children, because they can write in there what they would like to do. So, yes, we, parents will have the option, if they have multiple children, to make multiple choices.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. From there, trustee, I'm sorry, Mrs. Kaminsky?
Hi, thank you very much. Nice job, Dr. Musalem. I appreciate all the hard work that you and the teams did. I do have a question on this. What do we do with the children who parents unfortunately don't respond to the survey?
Thank you, Trustee Kaminsky. So, that was actually a conversation I had with the administrators. Each school is developing their own specific plan on how they're going to be submitting these surveys to the students so that they can track who does not comply with the guidelines. to the students so that they can track who does not complete the survey. And then, I hate to say this, but families, if you don't complete the survey, you're going to be pestered, you know, by someone who is going to be assigned to you to get that survey completed. Um, and hopefully, we'll be able to get a hundred percent participation. If we don't get a hundred percent participation, then the families that do not respond to the survey will be bounced back up to central office, and then we will be using our resources to reach out to those families, because we need to know specifically what families want to do. If, at the end, we do everything in our power to get a response, and we don't get a response, we will be assigning those families to online learning.
All right, I appreciate that. And then, I know sports, some of them are resuming. Are we resuming any clubs? Or are clubs going to be all online?
Clubs are gonna be, have to be online, and I will add that to my notes when I send that information out. And the reason for that is because we have to empty the schools of the students, except for those in athletics, in order to maintain control of who's in the building and when they're in the building. And that's just so, to reduce the risk of spread. And with the, with the athletics, it's, we're still following MHSAA, and we'll follow that format as we move forward.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, next, uh, trust, or Mrs. Janune, are there any questions from you?
Hi, no, I, I don't have any questions. I know I was able to sit on all three different levels, just because I have, you know, well, both the middle, the middle school and the high school, so I'm, I was thankfully, I'm pretty aware of what was going on and, um, but I know that every, everybody else, really, they put in a lot of work and, um, a lot of hours, a lot of different opinions, but, but that's what allowed it to come together, so it, it all worked out. So, yeah, thank you to everybody who sat in on the committees.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, and thank you to, uh, for you for being able to be there, uh, and to observe and, uh, and, and give some feedback as a parent, so thank you. All right. Well, that takes care of everything, uh, I believe, Dr. Mussum, from our board. So what I'd like to now do is open up this form to allow the opportunity of, of the administration as well as the board to uh, hear from our other stakeholders, who are definitely a very important and intricate part of the, uh, of the school district, and that is the parents of our students. So at this time, I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Green, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Green. So at this time, uh, what we'd like to do is maybe start with those that are on phone calls waiting, uh, to give them that opportunity, or do, or, or are we doing both? I should have asked that question first. Do we have online?
We do have some, we, we do have several written questions and comments, and we do have some folks that we're going to dial in, yes.
Okay, then why don't we go ahead with the, those that are, uh, currently made their presentations in writing, and we can read those out. Again, Dr. Mussum, uh, since they're not present, you and your staff can somehow find a way to get answers back to these individuals, um, as we move forward?
Definitely.
Appropriate. Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Green, then if you wouldn't mind, well, let's go ahead and hear from our, our first, uh, parent.
Okay, um, this is, uh, kind of a long question and comment. We might have to break it up. Uh, good evening, board members. I've been an advocate for in-person learning ever since the beginning, and always figured that something is better than nothing. However, after reading the plan, I feel like it was done last minute without much thought given. Therefore, there are a lot of holes. For instance, the plan suggests that teachers will select the groups, but does that mean my two kids will go on different days? If that's the case, then that's an increase in exposure. Why not do it by last name? Say AL is group A and M to Z is group B.
So this is a quick response. Um, as I stated in the presentation, groupings will be determined by household first, then by last name, to ensure that families with multiple family members will not be going to school on alternate dates. And, um, then it'll be go even further, once that is complete, where each building administrator will look at the numbers per classroom and per section to ensure that there is a, as equal as a divide as possible.
Okay. Asynchronous days. How is the teacher supposed to focus on students in class and at home? It spreads the teachers too thin. Is the teacher going to have to be stuck at their desk teaching? How does this make sense for kids at home?
So currently, when you look at how the classroom instruction goes currently, the teacher gets online, and the students are online with the teacher, and they do synchronous instruction. They do a lesson, they do a presentation, whatever it may be. And then they break the students off to work on something similar in reference to what their direct instruction was. That concept will continue, except when the teacher breaks off, the teacher will spend some time with the student on, online, and then put them into an assignment, where then the teacher will spend some time with the students face-to-face. Now, is it going to be perfect? No. What I do want to say is I have all the faith in the world in our teachers, because if we all remember back in August, when we went with the plan we currently are in now, many people are like, how are we gonna do this? And it worked out well. Why did it work out? As trustee Alziah said, our kids are resilient. And as, I don't remember which board, but the several board members have said, as well as trustee Alziah, our teachers are very talented. So is it gonna be easy? No. Is there a silver bullet? No. Do I have all the faith in the world that our teachers will be able to adapt and adopt? Yes. And I will tell you this. The Board of Education, as well as the administration team here, have committed to getting teachers additional resources as needed. Moreover, if you look closely at the plan, now, part of the plan that the parents didn't see was the plan for the teachers, where we built in additional time for the teachers to work within their leadership teams within each school to review how they're doing things, and to work with one another to identify how to do it better, which is what we call professional learning community, a true PLC. So we built that time in to give our teachers an opportunity, not only to do better, but to grow through this process. So I'm fairly confident in our teachers' ability to do so.
Okay. Um, lunch. There's too many absences given. Either kids bring their own lunch or offer a bagged lunch. This was a very confusing part of the plan.
It's totally bagged lunch. There will be no hot lunch served. Bagged lunches, so if, if my child brings lunch from home every day, that wouldn't change. If my child wants lunch from school, they would get a bagged lunch. So when we use the term bagged lunch, what that means is that we will still be serving breakfast and lunch, but it will be in a bag format. It will be delivered to the child wherever they are having their lunch.
All right. I'll be honest, before the pandemic, I never listened to a board meeting, and I have listened and asked comments almost every meeting since, but I feel like it's irrelevant. The board seems to have a plan in mind, and decisions are made before coming in. Asking for community input is a formality. The beginning of the school year, there were surveys and possibly an in-person learning option, but nothing became of it. A part of me feels like the plan is a formality and won't get approved, but I hope I'm wrong, because I, I want my kids in school. When asked about other districts opening, it's always about our district's needs being different. We aren't too different from surrounding districts. It's a matter of wanting to move forward and open or not. It's okay to look at their plans and see what works and what doesn't. Lastly, I want to say that for the fall, I hope we have a solid plan in place and get things together. If online is an option, those students should have their own teacher for online, and students who are in person should have, should not have to share that teacher with virtual students. Teachers are doing what they can, and they're spread too thin. It's just not fair. Thank you, and I hope my kids will be in school next month.
Thank you.
Dr. Mussum?
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, if I could, Mr. Chair, may I say something?
Uh, yes.
So today's news on Channel Seven reports thirty-two new school age cases. And that's today, of kids that have gone back and have gotten, um, COVID. And this administration, this board, have put the children's safety at utmost priority. And this plan has been worked on since prior to November and worked very diligently, and there's no easy answer for everybody. So I just want to let the parents know that while it may seem like it was put through fast, there has been numerous meetings on this to nauseam. And again, we just can't let some of our kids be a statistic like the thirty-two kids on Channel Seven tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. You're very welcome. Thank you. Uh, yeah, I, I'm gonna have to echo those sentiments as well, um, as well as the fact that uh, parents have been an intricate part of, of this, um, so we'll keep moving forward. Mr. Green?
All right. I thi- I think we may have answered this one, but I understand that the current plan aims to have only twenty-five percent of students max attending school on any given day. What will happen if some specific class periods at the middle and high school have more than twenty-five percent of students planning to be at school on the same day, even if the overall percentage is only twenty-five percent? How will students socially distance if that specific class period has more than twenty-five percent of, of students in attendance? Secondly, what will be the protocol for regular testing of teachers and students and for quarantines when COVID cases are diagnosed?
If I may, and Dr. Lazar, I'm gonna throw you out on this one, because Dr. Lazar knows more about this than I do, and she's worked diligently with our support, uh, personnel in order to, to ensure that we had the pre-screening done, because I know Dr. Lazar, as well as Mrs. Morgan, have negotiated a very good deal with one of our partners. Dr. Lazar, can you speak on that real quick, please?
Absolutely. So, um, we are using a platform called School Health Management, Management that's going to help us, um, track students in quarantine, um, do contact tracing and case management all in one place uh, digitally. And what that'll entail is, uh, we're getting ready to kick it off with the staff, uh, first to try it out. Um, their accounts are being set up this week. They're going in and, and doing their logins, and what'll happen is the, uh, county health screener that staff and all visitors to the building have to fill out when they walk into the building is put into an electronic format. So if you download the School Health Management app, you are able to, um, report your temperature and do the screener. And if you answer yes to any of those questions, then you will be asked to stay at home, um, if you're exhibiting any of those symptoms. And the principal and the secretaries are going to be attending training this week and next week on how to manage that dashboard. So really, um, we'll be asking parents to complete the health screeners of all their children prior to coming into the building. We'll be able to, on the dashboard, see if anybody did not fill out the screener prior to coming in. If a case of COVID is reported, a case management, um, uh, file will be started on that person. Um, and the platform is HIPAA and FERPA, uh, protected, so we have all of those things in place as well. And through that case management, we can do contact tracing. We can assign people quarantine period, and again, right on the dashboard screen, the principals, the secretaries, and district-wide admin will be able to see what date of return everybody is supposed to have, so we can have those tracked. Um, additionally, it will also look at any specific symptoms by building and district-wide to help us identify any patterns that are happening, or if there's, you know, uh, an increase in cases in, at one site um, and not at the others, and what were those symptoms. And so all of those things will be very easily um, managed and tracked through this platform. I hope that answered that.
Okay, thank you.
You can tell I'm excited, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Green, are there any other, uh?
Yes, yeah, uh, many more. Let's see what we have here. Will the survey for going back to school for in-person learning be per child or per family?
Per child.
Right. Okay, multiple questions and concerns. Number one, how are you going to ensure that in-person students are not going to distract or negatively affect online learning? Is someone going to take care of the in-person students while teachers are going live? I'm extremely concerned that this plan is going to hinder the quality of online education that our, our children are having right now. Two, elementary children rely so much on facial expressions. How are teachers going to teach the foundations of reading while wearing their masks? How do you expect children to build relationships with the teacher and classmates when they are all wearing masks and most likely on mute most of the time?
So let me answer those two questions. David's just, you know, so I don't forget. The first one is, again, comes back to what I mentioned earlier. I have a lot of faith in our teachers, and I have a lot of faith in our students. And they have adjusted to what we asked them to adjust to in September. They adjusted again in November, when the technology became readily available, and I believe they will adjust again. Will it be a perfect process? No, it will not be a perfect process. Will there be bumps in the road? Yes, there will be bumps in the road. But one of the philosophies I have as an educator is I believe in reflection. And we've built that reflection piece into the schedule so that teachers can get together and have those conversations. There's another thing that everyone forgets about is our social and emotional team. Okay, our, our social workers, our school psychologists, our counselors, our restorative practices technicians, we, through the Board of Education, who approved this before the pandemic even started, was this investment in social emotional education. And we didn't invest in social emotional education for the pandemic. We did it before the pandemic. And this is also gonna help us through this next phase. Because I will tell you this, even with the struggles we had in November, if it wasn't for our social workers, our school psychologists, and our counselors, uh, all those that I mentioned, we would have continued struggling. So I, I have a lot of faith in our team to be able to step up and be able to support that in that process.
All right.
All right.
Um, number three, if all children are going to learn virtually, what's the point of changing the plan, even though research supports their, that consistency and routine positively affect children's learning?
So that, that is something that we and all the committees discussed, and you know what? That's a question that I woke up multiple times at three-thirty in the morning, and I was trying to answer that question to myself. Part of the problem that we're facing is, again, our, our purpose is the social emotional piece. How do we reintegrate? That's why we're calling this a reintegration plan. We wanna reintegrate our children back into the learning environment, because ultimately, our goal this summer is to have more traditional learning opportunities. And then in the fall, God willing, come September, we're gonna be back to somewhat of a traditional learning environment. I say somewhat, because we're gonna advance on, based on what we've learned through this pandemic. So as we continue through this conversation, and as I continuously state that this is tentative, that's why we're having these conversations, so that we can come back. And as I, as I say this, the reason why we held off on the surveys until after today's meeting is so that families could make a decision based on information that they have. What we learned when we surveyed families in the summer was a lot of families were like, how can I answer this if I don't know what it's gonna look like? And the problem was in the summer, we were struggling with how it was gonna look, because the nation didn't know what direction we were gonna go. Now that we have been working on this for multiple months, what the surveys are gonna do for the community and for the board and for us, when we make our final or future decisions, because I don't say anything is gonna be final, our future decisions, it's gonna be based off of knowledge that the community has and what they are signing up for. And again, when we get these numbers, it could change this tentative plan one way or another, but not drastically. So we're adjusting as we go through.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, Ms. Barry.
I, I just, if I can, um, want the public to know that the reason we're discussing this is so the board gets the feel from the community. The decision has not been made. Um, again, it's the safety. We do have to consider those children that are having the social emotional problems, or where their families are not able, their parents are not able to do that work with them or get them online. Some of those kids might need to be in school to get the most out of it. So we're looking at everything, you know, like, again, the decision has not been made yet. Um, that's why we're having this, this discussion. Thank you.
Correct. Thank you. Yeah, correct. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, uh, trustee Sabah.
Yeah.
Can I get the floor for a second, please? Dr. Mussum, can you please address the, uh, the setup of the classrooms, uh, as it pertains to sneeze guards or around the individual desks for these students, around the teachers? As you can tell, people are very concerned, rightfully so. And I, you know, to the general, to the general public, there is no right answer. Like, there's no perfect answer for this. I I don't, you know, you can talk to five people and and get two or three on either side and um, but you know, the safety protocol, obviously, we talked about this at the last meeting. If you can address some of the safety measures that Mr. Jacobs and his team are taking into consideration?
Yeah, so we have followed all CDC guidelines. We're in turn, we have six-feet placards, markers across the entire buildings, the entire district. Moreover, we have sneeze, well, I don't even wanna call them sneeze guards because it's just more in terms of uh, additional precautions between the adults and the students. The students will be situated where their desks will be six feet, if not more, apart from one another. So at no time will the students be congregating or together. Some people are like, well, how are the students, if they're face-to-face, going to have like small group instruction or small group learning? You can still do that when you only have seven kids in the classroom and you have their desks six feet apart. You can still, that's that's actually a small Socratic circle right there. Um, and then for elementary, there's gonna be those those plastic guards on those kidney or elbow-shaped tables so that when teachers sit with students, they have that separation. And with the, so the research has shown, okay, and I want, the the key thing here is this last, it's been, it's gonna be here in March from when we shut down. And the research has shown that when you had, when you maintain six feet of separation and wear a mask, your risk de- goes down, it it drops so much of catching COVID because there is no exchange of bodily fluid. That's how COVID is contracted, but the exchange of bodily fluid. So if you have the mask and you're six feet apart, you're in a safe situation. Mr. Jacobs and his team, Mr. Jacobs, just so the community knows, he is our supervisor custodial maintenance and he and his team have done a fabulous and phenomenal job. And I wanna say something. Him and a lot of people of his team, I have to call them and tell them to go home half the time because they're putting in so much time and effort to ensure that our staff and our children are safe. And what I can say is that with these protocols that we are, we are gonna put forward, we are following every CDC guideline. The problem that we face, Trustee Sabo, and a lot of the community is dealing with is there's still a lot of people that are thinking about COVID one year ago with all of the unknowns. Now with the CDC guidelines and the understanding of how the how COVID is transmit, uh, transmitted, we have put those things into place and into protocol. So again, is it gonna be perfect? No, there's gonna be some things we're gonna have to adjust. There's gonna be some things that we're gonna say, okay, this doesn't work in right, we got, you know, we gotta move it around a little bit. And we're, and we're, and we're going to do that. But between masks, air purifiers in rooms where there's not natural ventilation, uh, six feet of separation, uh, no hot lunches, the drinking fountains are shut down, uh, deep predetermined entry doors, predetermined exit doors, predetermined times, predetermined restroom breaks. I mean, that's just, you know, a quick synopsis of all the things that we are looking at. Plus, I know a lot of people are like, well, what kind of disinfectants are you using, so on and so forth? I can tell you this, the disinfectants we were using pre-COVID are the same disinfectants that they say during COVID to use. So we have been doing it and we've been following through on that as well.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair?
Um, yes, Madam, uh, Mrs. Bear?
I saw Mr. Jacobs' hand go up.
Oh, I did not see that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, my apologies. Uh, Mr. Jacobs, I I I don't have a screen currently, so uh, please go ahead if you have a question.
I'm your eyes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Berry.
Good evening. Uh, Mr. Sabo, I just wanted to extend a little bit further on Dr. Masalim's statement. I've even gone as far, we have seven hundred and forty-one Univents, our heater systems in our schools. I've been, I've been working diligently to reprogram the uh, the venting on these to open up more frequently and and open up to a higher volume of uh, of capability. Typically, they're they're set for about twenty-five percent uh, open air intake. I'm increasing it to about seventy-five, so that should, that should exchange a lot more air. However, however, with doing that, it it, we run the the difficult situation with the heating and cooling. That's up for me to take care of, but I think it's very, very important that the air exchange in these rooms is critical. Um, and in the event the windows don't open, yes, Dr. Masalim has mentioned, we will be buying and purchasing air purifiers. And I've been researching those as well, uh, which are an individual room air purifier that you just plug into the wall and it's allegedly gonna circulate enough air and enough, uh, filter enough air for those classrooms. Um, the, it's a, it's a, it it will be a real challenge, but the, and another challenge that that I'm I'm experiencing with these these partitions that people are using uh, for terminology. The petition when it's affixed to a desk, it's only so tall. And now if a youngster stands up and walks around, the petition would have to go all the way to the ceiling in order for it to be a hundred percent effective. So with that being in mind, we're, we're really making sure that we're, we're making sure that the kids have plenty of space in the rooms. Um, I've gone through and looked at a lot of the square footages of rooms to confirm that we can get that many kids. And I believe the maximum we have is students per fifteen per classroom. Now, I've diligently done my math on all these rooms and I'm I'm making sure that we have plenty of room to do what we need to do for these kids to keep them safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. And I, and I do, I, people, again, as I mentioned, the board, like the unsung heroes. Mr. Jacobs and his team is another group of unsung heroes. I mean, they're the individuals behind the te- the scenes that make sure these things get done. So I want everyone to know that and thank you.
All right. Uh, Mr. Green?
Okay. We know that most teachers will have taken their vaccines prior to in-person learning beginning, yet the majority of adults in the community have not taken their vaccine yet. Don't you think you're putting the community at risk with this plan?
Well, that is, if if I could just say real quick, that is why we have slowly developed the plan the way we've developed it, because we are keeping the community at mind. I will say, last week I was on a local talk show and one of the things that we talked about was we don't just make decisions that we feel is good or indifferent for our district, but it's also our community. That is something that weighs on us. That is something that we're thinking about and that is something that we're focusing on. And again, we're trying to find that balance for what is best for our kids, what is safe for the community, to reintegrate and to get our students more in into a routine of somewhat of a social emotional regular environment.
All right, thank you.
Is your plan supported by research in the field of education?
So the the answer, the answer to that is yes and no. First off, there's no research on how to teach during a pandemic, so that's where the no comes in. Where the yes comes in is there is research on hybrid learning. Um, and I'll use a very specific term that has been talked about a lot. It's called flipped classroom. If you look up the research on a flipped classroom, which is researched and proven that it works, is when students watch like a twenty-minute lecture or demonstration online for homework. And then they come to class the next day and they actually get right into the the instruction and 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 you save that twenty minutes of learning time because you did that for homework. There is a lot of research behind that. There is also a lot of research that shows because our children today, as we all know, go to any waiting room, you'll see a two-year-old, three-year-old, six-year-old with something in their hands and they're playing around. Kids are born into technology today. So for us not to use technology, even when it's not a pandemic, we're going against the research. So what we're doing is we're learning on the fly with a pandemic, but we're using research about technology to help us get to where we need to be.
Okay.
All right.
Besides the governor's speech about the importance of in-person education, what has changed since the beginning of the pandemic that Crestwood School District that makes Crestwood School District think that March is the right time to go back to in-person learning?
So again, March is a tentative timeline. And I want to reiterate to the community, in November and December, specifically in December, when the news of the vaccine that it was coming out and through the individuals that I was speaking to through the county that was telling me what was happening with the vaccines. We, as an administrative team and subcommittees, got together in December before the governor's announcement and we stated, we need to prepare for possibly going back in March, maybe April, because if these vaccines roll out quickly, we may be able to start bringing our students back. Then with the governor's announcement, plus with the vaccines coming out, it just worked into our plan. So did I predict the future? No. But I was looking at the data to identify what could be our possible next steps. And that's how we went through this process.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I think the plan will not benefit in-person as teachers will continue to use virtual platform platforms to teach. And most importantly, it will hinder the quality of education that online students will have as teachers will be wearing masks and do not have a mute button for surrounding noise. Thank you.
I just wanna add to that real quick. I would like everyone in the community to know that God willing, when this pandemic is gone and but in in COVID is something that we learned from. We will continue to use the online platform. Why? Because that's the future of education. And if you look at what we as a district were planning on doing before the pandemic, for example, one-to-one uh, computers for students, what this pandemic did is they made us speed up our plan by about four years. So as we move forward, in online instruction has to be part of the instruction of our children because for twenty-first century learners and in the twenty-first century world of of economics, I can tell you this, not only is education gonna look a little different, but so is university life and so is the work world.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Green?
Regarding the tentative elementary schedule, could you please clarify the schedule for the Group B online only? What will change for this group between a day it's assigned to Tuesday versus a day it's not assigned, Monday?
Online learning will be every day. All students will learn every day. It'll be five days of instruction. So if you choose the online format, you will still attend your instruction from nine AM to um, and I don't wanna say the wrong times. Um, my apologies, I have it right here. So if you're an elementary student, your instruction time every day will be nine AM to two fifteen PM, every day. It doesn't matter if you're in Group A, Group B, or if you're online. So there will be no break in that instruction piece. The only difference is if you're a hybrid student and you're assigned to go to school on Monday, you'll be face-to-face from nine to two fifteen. But on Tuesday, you'll be online from nine to two fifteen. It just alternates every day.
Okay.
All right. How will you make sure that young children will not remove their masks during the school day? How do you make sure children are socially distancing?
Instruction, 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 support, 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 restorative practices, restorative practices, restorative practices. We as a district, forget about the pandemic. We as a district have committed to restorative practices. And what that means is that even if it's a discipline issue or something as simple as wearing your mask, that we're gonna use those opportunities to teach our children. Continue to teach our children, continue to teach our children. But there's also has to be an understanding from families that as we continue to try to teach our children, if they choose not to follow through, we need the family's support to help us with the children to follow the rules. And again, as Trustee Barry mentioned, this is for the safety of all children and the families. Where if it gets to a point where a child, it doesn't matter what age, does not follow the rules, then they'll be asked to stay home. Not because we don't want them, but because we have to be very diligent for the safety of our children.
Okay, Mr. Green?
Who came up with this part-time plan? Elementary schools should be full-time every day. High school students don't want to attend school. Being home online schooling is stressful and more dangerous than COVID nineteen.
If we could have everybody go back to school on a full, regular plan, we would do it tomorrow. But this plan was developed by over fifty, sixty people. And it was developed to figure, to find what is the best and safest uh, uh, prospect for all of our community, students and families. Again, no matter what plan we put forward, we understand that everyone's gonna be happy. But please know, we're doing the best we can to meet the needs of our community.
All right, thank you, Mr. Green.
I think we've answered this one. Will all the students from one household be on the same schedule of in-person versus remote, even if they're in different schools? Ideally, I want all my kids in school at the same time.
Of course.
Many school districts have successfully had their children attend school normally five days a week. While we pursue safety first, has our leadership reached out to these other districts to find out what they are doing right to allow this? Our goal should be ultimately, should be this ultimately, and I would like to move in that direction as opposed to two days a week alternating. Long story longer, what is different from our district that we cannot do that other districts are doing five days a week? I have heard of no mass breakouts.
Uh, yes, we have. Uh, we're in conversation with neighboring districts, even districts that aren't within Wayne County on the different plans. The difference between districts is, number one, uh, infrastructure, uh, size of classrooms, size of buildings, um, the ability to truly put students in the building every day. Um, the other difference is community spread as well as community dynamics and community uh, density. You have some communities who are not a dense community and they don't have large community spreads. Uh, the Dearborn Heights area, Dearborn area have a large community spread and they're a very dense community. Uh, another piece behind it too is the accessibilities to uh, technology. Uh, our technology needs were sufficed and completed uh, in November and we still have another twelve hundred Chromebooks that I believe either are here or in transit to be in here. So, and I can go on, there are other aspects too. So yes, we have been in conversation with other districts. We look at what other districts are doing. We compare that to what we can do. And this is uh, what we feel as a, as a, as a whole team would be best fit the needs of our community and school.
All right, thank you. Mr. Green?
Okay, here we, we have a parent who said, yes, I'd like my son to go to school.
Can't wait to see him.
Yep.
Trust me, I miss the kids. I didn't become a superintendent behind the screen.
Okay. I'm hearing from my children's teachers that my child will be on, will still be on Google Meets even if they are in person. How does in-school instruction look like when we are in hybrid mode?
So yes and no. So what it comes down to is there could be days that the teacher says, okay, I need everybody on, you know, for this specific lesson. And there would be days where they're not. This is where the flexibility piece for the teachers comes into play to identify for their classroom and their students, what's gonna work best for them. Again, there isn't one solution for every single classroom or every situation. But what I can say, and all the administrators are on this call, is that the goal is that the students that are in the classroom are not mandated and or have to be on their computer. But what I'd like everyone to understand is the use of Chromebooks and laptops is not gonna end come September of twenty twenty-one. Because as a district, we are moving and we are a one-to-one district now. What that means is, just like your child would get a textbook checked out to him or her at the beginning of the school year, now they're gonna get a Chromebook checked out to them at the beginning of the school year. Because that's gonna be part of our instruction as we move forward. And it goes back to that conversation on research and technology. So the students in the classroom, yeah, they may have their Chromebooks, but that is not gonna be the instruction. The instruction is gonna be so that they're there face-to-face with their peers as well as their teacher.
Mr. Chair, uh, just to add on that, so Dr. Um, they're not gonna be mandated to bring their Chromebook or their personal computer to school. They're not going to be mandated to bring their Chromebook or their personal computer to school on their um, scheduled days, right?
They're not going to be mandated, but they could, it could be recommended, which could help them with the instruction on that day. So students who, let's say, don't have a laptop or are using mom or dad's laptop. Like we said, we have twelve hundred more Chromebooks that we will be assigning to students in that situation. So it'll, because as we move forward, the goal is that every single student will be, will have their own. Crestwood Schools Chromebook that will be assigned to them. Because it is going to become part of the regular instruction as we move forward as a district.
Okay, also, if you could, because I'm unable to view uh, board members, if you could just please recognize the chair first before you ask your question. And then I will recognize you. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Green, continue.
Yes. Why is it safe for students and staff to go back face to face, yet the board meetings are all still virtual?
Currently, the board meeting is virtual because we cannot get everybody in the same room with this large meeting. Because of the mandate set forth on the percentage of individuals that can be in a room based on square footage. We will be moving back to uh, a face-to-face board meeting. Um, we're having our attorneys look into that and give us the legal opinion so that we are not out of compliance.
Um, also, if I could, uh, Dr. Mousam, isn't it correct that right now, that's also in effect until February twenty first, I believe? So uh, I, I, I know that you've done your due diligence. Once the state has given us those permissions, then we will return to having our meetings live. Am I correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Green?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, if I can comment, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, uh, trustee.
Can you let the public know how we've been begging you to meet in person? I mean, I will, I really, I have been dying to me. I miss people. I want to see people, so. Most of us have been begging for that, so it's not, it's not something we're avoiding, so thank you.
And I can, I can voucher that because I think everybody has called and said, when are we going to be back face to face?
Right.
Absolutely. Thank you for commenting on that. Uh, Mr. Green?
Has the board considered or will they consider having a group of kids? Online with one teacher? Then having another teacher teach the live class and stay with those kids for their online days? And a third teacher doing the same? The current plans seem very busy for teachers. Controlling two groups of kids is very hard.
I, I'd like everyone. Yes, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. President. Maybe I, and I, and I do apologize, I do want to add something that. Teachers were part of these subcommittees. I, I, I'd like everyone to understand that, that these subcommittees. Weren't just administrators or school board members. The teachers made up over eighty percent of the subcommittees. All of these conversations took place and we did look at, do we have a sole online teacher? And what we found is logistically, we cannot do it. Because what would end up happening is we would not be able, even if we did a full online teacher. And we said another teacher would be face to face. Oh, I'm going to go back to the presentation. For elementary, it would displace kids and we don't want to take kids away from their elementary teachers. For secondary, it would create a logistical problem because we still would have to have a group A and group B. Because we would have to put uh, students on an alternating basis. If we put students on an alternating basis and we had a separate online group for secondary. What would happen is if God forbid, we ended up going to another shutdown. There would be a large group of students who would lose out on instruction. So looking at the fact that we have three months left in the school year and looking at the remainder of the calendar. We felt that this tentative proposal would help alleviate that problem. So we did look into it and the negatives outweighed the positives.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Green? Uh, Mr. Green?
Mr. Green, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Uh. Do online and hybrid versions have the same teaching team? For example, if my child is in group B now. Will he have the same teachers when moving to hybrid?
So elementary won't change. Secondary, so middle school, many students will keep their current teachers, but many won't. It'll be. I, I don't know what the percentage is. High school could change. The reason being is just like in a regular school year. We're going to try three, the trimester, the third trimester starts March fifteenth. So just like in a regular school year, they would change teachers at the start of a new try anyhow. But for elementary, their teachers will stay the same. Nothing will change.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Green?
Can families choose online learning with the stipulation of returning if things continue to get better before the end of the school year?
The answer to that now is no. And the reason why I say the answer to that now is no. Because logistically, we have to ensure that we maintain consistency. For safety across all schools. Now, if. God willing, come April first and COVID disappears. And we don't have to do all of these CDC guidelines, everybody will come back to school. But I don't foresee that happening. So we have to maintain whatever choices made by the parents, we have to maintain those choices through the end of the year.
All right, thank you. Mr. Green?
Don't you think that in hybrid? In the hybrid approach, as proposed, that students at home will get less attention and accommodation from their teacher. In comparison to what they had been typically getting in the full online sessions?
That is. I want to answer that, that is, that is a pertinent point and we did discuss that. And therefore, that is why um, in, in, in the, in the schedules for, for middle school. For middle school, enrichment support is built in the schedule. That's why the middle school numbers are, they're going to get more hours of instruction than they are currently getting. Because we built in the enrichment. For elementary and for high school, there, as you see, there's an instructional timepiece there. The teachers every day will get, will have time built into the schedule. Where they can help students with additional enrichment support. Either before or after school. Right now, it's scheduled for the before-school time. So it works out where all students that the teachers feel need that additional support because they are online. It's built into the schedule for that additional support.
All right, thank you. Mr. Green?
Okay. In. In the full online session, the teacher is only focused on the screen with kids. Now the teacher needs to address students in class and online at the same time. What happens if there's a technical issue with audio or video?
That's when we call Mr. David Green and he comes and fixes it, but. And that's a very good point and um, I know our tech team is available and they support. Um, that, that's going to be, I, that, that's. Um, there is no like perfect answer for that. That's going to be one of those hiccups that we're going to have to address as they occur. I, I, I'm going to be blatantly honest with you. There are some things that. We'll have to address as they occur.
And that is absolutely correct. I think we, we all have experienced technical difficulties, no doubt. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Green?
Yes. There's, there is an orientation for fifth and ninth grade students starting in their new buildings. Has an orientation for our youngest students, many of, many that have never been in school have been considered. The adjustment is challenging on a regular year. It will be even more difficult trying to address their many needs with kids online and in person.
So I can ask Jill, Nasreen or Alice, if you want to comment on something your teams have been talking about. In reference to that social emotional piece for the elementary students coming in and getting to know their new buildings.
Good, good evening, Crestwood community. Um, yeah, just to fill you guys in, we have been talking about that, that is in the works, especially for our kindergartners. Uh, we will be doing some um, upcoming videos to welcome all the families. Letting them know what the new criteria and protocol is for our social distancing plans. We also will be reaching out to our uh, kindergartners and having those um, virtual meetings as well as. Bringing them gradually into the building, letting them see the facility, walking them through the halls, letting them see what the protocol will be like. So we do have that in place. We are working with our teams in each building to accommodate every building. Because each building is um, suited differently for our students. And um, we're looking forward to making sure to reach out to our parents. As well as making sure our students are comfortable and our staff are ready to go before anything. So we do have. Plans, we're still in the works on that, but we will continue to reach out to our families and let them know.
And if I can add, we have a tremendous advantage this year because every student already has a very powerful relationship with their classroom teacher. That is not something that we normally have in the month of August or September, so we're going to capitalize on that for sure.
Thank you. And uh, I, I apologize, I've just drawn a blank on the principal from Kinlock. I'm not sure if she wished to uh, add any comments as well.
Mrs. Marvaso.
Yeah, I'm sorry, thank you. This is Marvaso, I didn't mean to call out on you like that. I, I don't have a screen, so I can't, he was attending, my apologies, but yes, if, if. Since the question is pertaining to students that attend all three, uh, is there anything else that you would like to add to that?
Um, Allison, uh, Nasreen pretty much summed it up. Um, about, you know, uh, bringing our kids back and as we bring them back with a gradual uh, release. And introduce them to the building through short video clips and lessons before we actually start to face to face. So if our tentative um, date was March uh, fifteenth. Then, you know, a couple of weeks before that, we would be introducing um, lessons and showing the kids. Um, you know, what our expectations and procedures are and having our classroom teachers do some more community building. Of what it's going to look like when the students do arrive.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, um, this is Barry.
And let's not forget what, I know I've seen uh, Kinlock, Ms. Marvaso, and I know that uh, Ms. Saad have done some community. Functions where they've had their jive-throughs and they've had different things um, on the grounds. Uh, whether it's through PTA or whatever, but things have happened at those two buildings that I'm very aware of. Um, which has had that connection with the community, which will also be very helpful. So thank you ladies for doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
Okay, and I, I'd just like to add right here that um, we do have some folks who've. Given us their phone number so that we can dial them in so they can speak live, but we'll do those at the end of the written questions. We'll, we'll group those together. So for those folks who've put their phone number in, um, we will get to you.
Thank you.
Although my children definitely need to go back face to face, my fifth grader is unable to wear a mask for five hours due to claustrophobia. How, what should I do about that? Should I just keep her online?
So I was, you know, that's of course, a, a personal decision, but what I would highly recommend is reach out to the school, have a conversation with the school. Have a conversation with the team at the school to see what, you know, what accommodations or how that can be addressed and or supported. Um, there's going to be situations where there's individual students with individual needs. We understand that. And that's where that communication with the school is going to be crucial. So I would highly, highly recommend schedule um, a conversation with the school principal. The school principal will invite her team. Uh, or his team to discuss, you know, what are some options to support you in that process?
Thank you. Mr. Green?
What's happening in school to ensure that technology will support all of the teachers on Zoom meetings? And other websites in class all at the same time? This is a huge pull on the broadband at one time. And I'm worried that by staying home, my child will get dropped from the meeting.
Um, David, can you answer that?
I, I will say that we've looked into that and we believe that uh, of course, we've never done it before. But we believe that the network has the capacity to handle that and it, it's one of those things that we'll, we'll see what happens when we get there, but. Because of the staggered schedules and the way things work, it's not like every teacher will be online all at the same time, so I think we'll be okay.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
I noticed that the time changed for starting and ending school. I noticed that the time changed for starting and ending school. What will working parents do in this case? Have you put this into consideration?
So the one thing that we have taken into consideration, I did not mention it in my PowerPoint, is that the parents that have their children part of the um, instructional day program. That instructional day program will continue. The only difference is it'll continue at your child's homeschool. So if your child doesn't need an instructional day program, that will continue same timeframe, just it'll be at your child's homeschool. Um, in reference to other children, um, our, our purpose right now with the staggered schedule is to try to support if they have. Uh, older siblings, so on so forth. But all, overall, all in all, the main group of instruction time really hasn't changed. For our elementary schools at a drastic point where parents are not able to be there for their children. So we haven't made a major drastic change, but we had to adjust the times for transportation. As well as staggered for our secondary students to be home when needed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Green?
Will drama and band be able to work after school as sports now can?
Yes, um, drama and band will follow MHSAA rules. Except there won't be any performances because we can't really have an audience. And um, we'll be following MHSAA rules in terms of spectators as well for sporting events. But yes, if band and drama uh, is considered part of the. In uh, how can I put it? The after-school enrichment piece of athletics and the arts. Uh, at the Crestwood Schools, I'd like everyone to know this. At the Crestwood Schools, when we speak about athletics, we're also speaking about the arts. The arts and athletics to what's go hand in hand. This includes robotics. So we're, we're building this where it's, you don't just have to be on a sport. But if you're part of a sanctioned Michigan program, State of Michigan, Michigan Department of Education program, it's the same rules.
Okay.
Thank you.
What happens when a teacher tests positive for COVID?
So I'll uh, turn that to Dr. Lazar. If a teacher tests as positive for COVID, Dr. Lazar, if you can walk through. The process, I know you touched upon it already with the, with the contact tracing, but just what are the immediate impacts and then how do we follow up?
So i- if a teacher in the classroom tests positive for COVID, I know that we have already um. Obviously, the first step would be to inform the parents in that classroom of the exposure. We would at that point also do contact tracing of anybody outside of that classroom. Who that teacher may have come into close contact with, based on the CDC and Wayne County Health. Um, definition of a close contact, which it. In summary, it's uh, fifteen minutes or more. Um, within a twenty-four hour period of being within six feet of somebody and without a mask. So if everybody is following protocol, um, then hopefully we um. Aren't ever in that situation where there is that level of close contact. Um, outside of that, um. We have already started generating a list of substitute teachers. Who would be able to, when it was safe, to return to that classroom to come in and. Fill in for that teacher until that teacher was well enough and able to return to work. Additionally, if it, if the decision is made um, through consultation with the health department. Because again, when those positive cases come in, we do have to call the health department and inform them of those. And they normally will advise us on further actions to take a case-by-case basis. Um, then at that point, you know, being that we're hybrid. Uh, those students, if they do have to be quarantined at home, will then go into. Uh, virtual instruction for that period of time until it's deemed safe for them to return to the school.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes, I'm, is that?
Uh, just to uh, further on that, Dr. Lazar, um. So would the teacher then, the teacher would obviously leave and be um, quarantined. Are you saying a substitute would then take over the class or we would shut down the class for, you know, ten days or uh, whatever is mandated? Or like all the classes in the school would shut down or? Before the kids can return to school, are they having to provide a negative um, test or? Like what, what exactly would be the um, the, the protocol in handling that?
So it, it's going to depend again on a case-by-case basis and being able to measure the, the level of exposure. Um, but if the classes are isolated, the way we're. We're looking at them in the hybrid model where there's not a lot of interaction. Um, between the students in different classrooms, right? Because we're, we're trying to mitigate that as best as possible with the lunches being delivered to the classroom, et cetera. Um, again, that is a case where we would call the county and get some assistance in determining that, you know, giving them all. Again, that is a case where we would call the county and get some assistance in determining that, you know, giving them all of the factors that came into play with that specific case. And then determining if we did have to keep the kids in quarantine for 10 days, or if it was deemed that the kids could return and then have the substitute teacher come in. We would not put a substitute teacher in a situation where it wasn't safe for everybody to be back in the classroom or those students to come back into the classroom. With the quarantine, it's they monitor for, they monitor for symptoms for those 10 days before they, before they return to, to school. If it's a case where it's determined that we need to get, you know, additional COVID testing, as Dr. Masalem had in his PowerPoint, we do have some partnerships with some of the clinics in the local area where we could refer people and work in collaboration with them to do that testing. If it's necessary at any point to do widespread testing, I know I've personally spoken to one of those clinics where they are also, again, if it's deemed necessary under a specific circumstance, they would be able to come out onsite and do the testing for us there as well.
And if it was a student, it somewhat be handled the same way too, right? Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Mrs. Barry?
Yes, I guess if I can ask Dr. Lazar or Dr. Masalem, what percentage of our employees will be getting or have already received the vaccine? Because I, I'm taking it that this is the reason that we're giving the staff the extra time, just in case we decide to go back, that the majority of staff will have had the opportunity to get both vaccines and have that week to recoup. So we are taking those measures, correct? And what percentage of our staff did take that initiative to take those vaccines or decide not to take the vaccines?
You know, I believe in, and I misspoke at the lie, at the, when I was doing the the call last week, I said 80%. I just redid the math because I used the wrong number. We're at 70%. 70% of our staff volunteered to take the COVID vaccine. And that 70% of the staff, which is over 200, it's over 260 staff members, took the first dose this weekend and they will be getting their second dose the weekend of March 5th and 6th. So Trustee Barry, thank you for bringing that, because that is one of the things that we worked very closely with our staff on. And we said, look, we understand and we understand your commitment. So we're going to do this in the safest and most possible way.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green.
So I'm sorry, one more thing that, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
With that being said, do we have any idea, the 30% that did not or do not want to take that vaccine, what the rules are?
I couldn't answer that. Like, we can get that information for you. Well, actually, yes and no. The reason for that is because we didn't track what their roles were. What we did was that information came through me. And the only reason why I collected their names and so on and so forth was so that we could have the correct data for the county when we submitted it to the spreadsheet. So Dr. Lazar didn't even have access to their names. And I didn't break down, you know, what positions they were in, is we offered it to everyone in the district from people in transportation, everyone. And that, yeah, so to be honest, I wouldn't be able to break that down.
Okay, thank you. Also, just something to keep in mind on the radar is the 70% Dr. Masalem was the ones that scheduled through us, correct?
Correct.
We do also have several staff members that went out and got tested on their own as we were waiting for the, the the date to come in from the county for us to be able to schedule our staff. So it, it is probably higher than 70%.
And that's probably where I got the 80% number from before. But I want to, but I do want to be clear to the community. Out of respect for our staff, if they didn't sign up for the vaccine, we didn't ask those that didn't sign up why they did not. We only asked staff to sign up that were volunteering to go get the vaccine. It's, we don't feel it's our place to go out, and I want the community to know this. We want to respect the privacy of our staff. And therefore, that's why there could be a higher number of staff who are vaccinated.
Mr. Chair, I have one more question.
Yes, Trustee Quoz.
In regards to the vaccine also, in the event that we do have substitutes or any other guests coming into the building to perform any kind of work, are we going to be privy to know that they were vaccinated? Or is that something legally we can't ask? Or?
Yeah, it's nothing we can ask. The only thing we can do is go through the screening protocol, you know, other than that, no.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Green?
First of all, thank you for all you do. I'm a little concerned. If I can, if I choose to send my elementary school student back, how do we expect teachers to teach in class and online at the same time?
Yeah, again, it's something that we're going to be working on.
Will students, I'm sorry, will students be required to be vaccinated prior to attending face to face?
No. No. And Mr. President, may I, may I make a recommendation just for the sake of time, if it's okay? I know that Mr., I know that Mr. Green is on like question number 38, and there's like 75 questions. Is it okay if Mr. Green does not ask a question that's already been answered? I'm asking the board if that's okay in order to save time? Or do you feel that we need to read every question, even if those questions have been answered?
I would get a consensus from the board, but I would agree with you that there are some multiple questions that have been asked and have been answered. I would agree with you also that we do need to at least give some time to those that are, are waiting to, to call then. Board, how do you, how do you feel about this?
Mr. President, this is Danielle.
Yeah, go ahead.
My thoughts are if it's a question that's already been asked and answered, I don't think that we need to ask it again. However, it's a com, if it's a comment of concern, we should hear it, even though it, it comes from a question that's been answered, if that makes sense.
Okay, that, yes, that does, absolutely. Okay, I would agree as well. Thank you. Yeah, that does, that will help in saving time. So Mr. Green, what we can do, I understand that there's 75. I definitely want to give those that are waiting for receipt phone calls the opportunity. Is there anything that has, that you see there that has not been done yet?
Well, let's, let's do the quick version here then. The, the next question is really just a comment about not sure how a teacher can teach half online and half in school in a 35 to 40 minute class, but I think we've talked about that. You mentioned that instructional, instructional time for all elementary students would take place from 9 to 2:15. Does this mean that all students, even kindergarten to second grade virtual students, will be expected to sit online the entire day?
That is going to be part of the expectation, where in turn we are, you know, the teachers are going to be breaking up that instruction to support those students through the process.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Okay. Yes, Mrs. Barry?
I've been calling other districts. I know people on other school boards. I have been asking those questions. Guess what? It's working. Other districts have been dealing with it since October, November, and it's working. So, you know, we started this like Mr. Seba said, Trustee Seba said, you know, it wasn't perfect when we started this, you know, we were all nervous, we were all worried. Are we, are the students going to get the best out of this? And guess what? It worked. So, you know, these are things that we are asking. I know other board members have been reaching out to who they know and they're asking those questions. I've talked to parents, I've talked to employees. Just so the public knows, we are asking those questions and it is working in other places. So let's see what happens from here.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
I just heard someone, was it originally I heard Mr. Seba, am I correct, Mrs. or not?
Yeah, it is correct.
Okay, Mr. Seba first?
Yes, to Ms. Barry's point, I mean, you know, I, I think the question's been asked a couple of times, Dr. Masalem. And there's a legitimate concern of this multifaceted plan to have people in person, young, young children in person and children that will be online. I mean, we have to have some kind of markers where we're watching this, and it has to be, I think, the administrators in the buildings. And I think parents need to be able to reach out to the administration within the building if they see something that isn't working. And these things need to be escalated quickly, please. This is to the community. If this does, you know, if this is something we put to vote and, and we do, we do approve this, this is something that the parents have to have ownership in. You have to please raise your hand if you see something that isn't working. Reach out to the school principals and let them know what's going on so that we can elevate this. We need to know as, as, as trustees, as the board, to make sure that we're facilitating this properly. And if something needs to be adjusted, you know, I, I rest assured that Dr. Masalem and his staff will make sure that it's taken care of. I just wanted to make sure we pointed that out, Dr. Masalem, because it's been asked quite a few times.
Yes.
So it's a very legitimate concern.
It is, it is.
Absolutely correct. Mrs. Quoz?
Currently, the elementary kids online do one hour lunch. So even with the new hours from 9 to 2 for the face to face and the hybrid, would the face to face students and online both get the, you know, 12 to one hour, you know, the one hour lunchtime?
I don't know what the exact amount of time will be for lunch, but it would be the same. If, if one of the elementary team members wanted to mention, is it going to be an hour or 30 minutes in the, in the proposed schedule? Or have we not solidified that yet?
So our proposal would be for a 45 minute lunch period. During the online only instruction, we had a one hour time period to allow families to go and pick up meals for distribution or to pick up packets at the school. But once our kids are face to face, a 45 minute lunch period will be plenty of time for everybody.
Mr. Chair? Um, what's the plan? I thought the plan was that they would get their meals. They would get all their meals for that week, correct? Will this, will they still need that kind of time?
There, I don't, I'm not sure if I understand the question. My apologies.
Okay, she's saying that right, they're currently getting an hour and that they're looking at 45 minutes. If they were to go back into the classroom, I know we're going to need that extra help, right? Because you're going to have to bring in subs, noon hours and such to fill in those gaps. Would that still apply to the students at home?
The, the students at home will still have an opportunity to pick up lunches like they currently do. But the students that are face to face, they will get a lunch for the day they're there, and then they'll get something at the end of the day when they leave for the next day. I don't know if Mrs. Herenshaw or Mrs. Aide is on this call. I don't have that exact answer. I know they were working on some things. I'm not sure if someone on the team has that example. Oh, Mrs. Aide is on the line. Go ahead. Go ahead, Mrs. Aide.
Hi, yes, um, us, students that are hybrid would be receiving a bag lunch in, in the class and they're and they'll have the same number of meals to take home with them. And our online students would still have, there's seven meals to pick up on district day.
Okay, so we'll still have.
I'm sorry, Dr. Masalem, go ahead.
No, I turn it over to you, Mr. Chair. My apologies.
Okay, all right, thank you. In board, I'm looking at the clock. There's five minutes, there's five minutes till our, our regular meeting. And I want to give those that have been waiting to make some calls that opportunity. How many phone calls do we have, Mr. Green?
You're on mute, Dave. We have five or six calls. That's all.
All right, I would like to try to move, board, I would like to try to move and give those five or six people the opportunity. I do not feel that we need to really get to, to stretch this out. What we can all of we do is take those questions that have been forwarded and then send them off to administration to answer those individually if they choose. A lot of the information is being presented, is very clear and concise, and I think all parties still continue to have more questions. But in the interest of time.
Okay.
I'd, I'd like to have that opportunity to get, to see if we can push through those, those six calls at least.
Okay, let's give it a try here.
All right, thank you.
Dial in the first one.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Mrs. Barry?
Yeah, I, I, I don't really want to rush it where we don't hear everybody out. I, I don't think it would be a problem for us to move the meeting, you know, to a later time, but I really feel that I know that even Trustee Kaminsky has been trying to get your attention. I know you can't see what we're seeing. But anyway, I, yes, I just want to make sure that everybody gets heard because I don't want the administration to be dumped on because we didn't hear them out today. So please, if we could, if you don't mind, if anybody disagrees, please.
A second now.
Okay, then why don't we do this? Why don't we do this? Let's get through these six calls. We can go back to the, the, the promise that had been written in. I think there's probably safely say maybe another 40 left.
Can we have Ms. Kaminsky say what she wants, please, if you don't mind?
Yes, yes, Mrs. Kaminsky.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. I also think this meeting's done for the community so that they can be heard. And even though some of these questions have been repeated, I feel like parents are going to feel like we're picking and choosing. And I certainly don't want a parent to feel that way. So if we have to go into our regular meeting and just keep going on this meeting, I think we need to do that. The other thing I wanted to mention regarding the comments about having separate teachers and one comment was to have three teachers, you know, there's a teacher shortage and Crestwood is not the only district going through plans to facilitate and meet our kids' needs. There are not enough teachers in the world to meet the needs of all the school districts with each of their own individual plans to have multiple teachers per classroom. I mean, no one expected COVID, no one expected us to have to make alternative plans. No one expected us to have to have only, you know, 10 kids per classroom because of social distancing and we just can't possibly meet those needs. So I just kind of want to remind everybody that while it seems like an easy plan, there's an awful lot of obstacles taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Green?
All right, we're going to dial in the first caller. It's Mary Blake.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mrs. Blake?
Yes.
Yes, good evening. This is Mr. Garcia from the Crestwood School District Board of Education. We are returning your phone call. Do you have a question for the board as well as our administration?
Well, yes, I do regarding this. It took our children three months to get used to this homeschooling thing. And now all of us adults think that we know what's best for our students and we want to uproot them now. And now we want to throw them back into a classroom. I understand the need to get back to class. I understand the need for socialization. I understand all that. But you also have to understand that these are elementary students. Some of these students have autism and they have learning disabilities. So now when you uproot these students and you tell them, this is something new now, we're going to throw you into something new again. What you think's going to happen to these students? Not only that, I watched the teacher thing today at 2:30. And also, I was informed that if the students touch their masks more than three times, they're going to be sent home and won't be allowed to come back to school. Now, in my eyes, that would be chastising a little elementary student because children are children. And we can't foresee what children are going to do. So I don't understand why this can't be put off and all this set up for August when we go back. Because now we have to uproot everything and these teachers, all of ours, awesome, awesome to the end of the world. These teachers are there for our children. That's the problem. I mean, you, you adults are the ones that are thinking, oh, hey, I'm making these, I'm making these decisions and they're good. Now these teachers are thrown into these classrooms, they have to take temperatures, they have to do all this cleaning on top of teaching the kids all this other stuff. And this has all got to be done on their own. They're not getting extra pay. They're not getting extra help. And this is going to be thrown on them. And now, now you're going to have these classrooms that are going to be dis- And now, now you're going to have these classrooms that are going to be dysfunctional and now our students won't get to learn what they need to learn. And if we chastise our elementary and middle school students now, what do you think is going to happen? We are going to put out a bunch of illiterate dumb students, they're going to want to drop out of school because, hey, I was chastised at a young age, my teacher reprimanded me and I got thrown out of school in second grade.
Mr. Chair, please.
I'm still finishing, I'm not done. I'm still finishing. So in order to chastise the child, why are we doing this?
Mr. Green, would you please mute the caller?
Yes.
Mrs. Blake, Mrs. Blake, I put you on mute. My apologies first by not informing you that it's a three minute time limit. Your information is duly noted. I'm not going to speak on behalf of a comment that I'm not familiar with regarding students being punished in the classrooms. I will leave that up to administration. But I do believe that the plan that is being in place does have the room for parents as yourself to comment and to reach out to administration, specifically your specific school, to help and address the concerns that you may have. Dr. Mussum, is there anything else that you believe that you may want to comment on that?
The only thing I'm going to mention is in reference to the three times and the mask, the purpose behind that is, like I said at the beginning, through restorative practices and through teaching, we want our students to be able to follow the rules, so on and so forth, with the support of the parents. If it gets to the point where children are not following the rules after multiple occasions and multiple support measures, then we may have to ask the family to keep the child home. But again, this isn't a disciplinary thing, this is more in terms to ensure that we are following protocol. And again, this is all tentative.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Mrs. Blake, I just want to, so Mrs. Blake, I hope that you're still there and you have an opportunity to hear. Please make sure that, you know, the concerns and the comments that you have moving forward, those are addressed with your individual schools, but I agree that there's no one here that is looking to discipline children regarding the touchings of a mask. Again, I was not there, I did not hear the comment. All right, we will move forward, but at this time, Mrs. Barry?
I just wanted to mention, this, we're giving both opportunities. It's not like every student is coming in person. If that parent, if that parent feels that that's not the right decision, you know, once we vote on this, if it's not the right decision, then the beauty of this is that that parent can decide to leave that, you know, if they think that that student is best at home, then we're giving you that opportunity. Again, this isn't set in stone, this is, that's why we're hearing out everybody. Thank you.
Correct. Thank you. All right, if we could move to the next caller.
Mr. Chair, Mrs. Janu had her hand up, just to let you know.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Janu?
Yes.
Okay, no, thank you, Mo. I'll let we continue for now, that way we don't, I don't hold anybody up. Thanks, Mo, Mr. Sablon.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
All right, we'll go ahead, we'll dial in Myrna Hamadi and I will, I'll remind everybody that we have a three minute limit on the calls, I'll set a little timer here and see if we can.
Thank you.
Remind you of that. Hold on one second.
All right, Mrs. Hamadi, this is Mr. Garcia from Crestwood School District. We are attempting to contact you regarding some comments that you may have had in regards to addressing our Crestwood School District and Board of Education. We've reached your voicemail and please, if you get an opportunity, reach out to the name, number that you had and we will try to reach you back. All right, moving on to the next, Mr. Green?
All right.
The subscriber you have dialed is not in service. If you feel you've received this message in error.
Well, this is getting easier, isn't it?
Yes. Next name?
Yes, the next one is Erica LaFever.
Yes, this is She, please call me Erica.
Erica, thank you. My name is Mr. Garcia, I'm with the Crestwood Board of Education and we are calling you because you have some comments in regards to the reintegration of school. Just a reminder that you have a three minute time limit and Mr. Green, who is on the other end, will be reminding at the end of that three minutes. So at this time, we wish to hear your concerns.
I do understand the three minute time limit, but I have been waiting for an hour and a half to speak on this. I will be brief and I will not be as vocal or emotional, but I may need a couple of minutes. I have a couple of concerns. The first, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We will adhere to the, what we must adhere to the three minute time limit, so, but you're, please proceed, yes, please proceed.
My son is autistic and I'm not one of those parents who thinks it's your job to teach him and I take care of him at home and give him dinner and that's that. That's not how things work. I've akin his resource team, Ms. Aberjammer knows me, Mr. Abu Hassan, Ms. McAllister, Ms. Jurness, everybody who's been taking care of my son.
Uh huh.
Sorry.
That's okay, that's all right.
I call them his adventures. They're like superheroes. So I know better than, or not better than, but I know just as well as any other parent, the social and emotional things that children are going through.
Yes.
You could physically see my son getting depressed when all this was going on. He strives on routine, he strives on those couple of friends that he has, he strives on his classroom, his face to face. And I'd like any one of you educators to think about the first day of school after fall and they're in their new outfits. And they're excited to see each other. I don't know how social distancing, they're kids, I don't know how this is going to be 100% feasible, to be honest. I work in healthcare, so my opinion comes from a medical standpoint as well. Dr. Youssef, I emailed you recently about vaccinations and there's only, what, 160 days left? At the height of H1N1 in 2019 in April was when they started rolling out the vaccines and by December they started vaccinating people. And then by March, less than a year later, we saw positive results and we saw things changing and we saw things getting better and that virus, that didn't mutate the way the one we're currently affected by does. The vaccine isn't 100% for all people who are receiving it. You have to consider, the first question you read was, how is our community any different than anybody else's? Our community is different. I live less than a mile from the school. We have a large Arab American population and it's not uncommon to have several generations of families in one home. You're not just risking children, you're not just risking the kids' safety, they have grandparents that live with them that are immunocompromised anyway. You have children who are asymptomatic, who don't show any symptoms, who don't run a fever, who, when they answer the questionnaire, they don't raise any red flags, but they may still be carrying it, they may still be passing it along, they may still be giving it to their family, they may still be bringing it home. We just need a little bit more time and with partially what, 160 days of school, there's a very real chance that come, and I say this because of what I've seen in the past with such things, come fall, these problems that we're addressing may not be problems anymore. And I don't understand this rush to put children back in a situation where they're going to be potentially exposed or even our teachers, our teachers are suffering, they don't, a lot of them don't even want to say anything because they're afraid of retaliation or negative impact on them. They're suffering from not just burnout, but demoralization. You're talking about somebody who went into a field that they strive on, they, sorry, their report.
Don't be sorry, please.
Is seeing their students, is seeing how excited they get when they're learning. So when you're in a field where you physically see these students, when their aha moments or they're feeling better about themselves and you don't have that anymore, this is similar to PTSD. Our teachers are retiring, they're quitting, they're going into other fields, we are losing good instructors. The students are losing their adventure. I understand, believe me, some kids don't get a meal unless they're in school. We have poverty levels that we have to address. We have autistic children, we have other children who need that social interaction. But as parents, we have to pull ourselves up and stay. Thank you for what you've done so far. Love to help you. I'll come in and clean, oh, great people.
I, I.
But it's too dangerous to return right now.
The one thing I want to say, Mr. Chair, and my apologies, is ma'am, please don't apologize. We thank you for your comments. Don't ever apologize for giving us what you truly believe and what you feel. That's why we're here.
Thank you. We appreciate the fact that you have reached out to the Board of Education as well as the Crestwood Administration and your comments are duly noted and we appreciate your phone call. Taking our phone call, I should say. You're very welcome, have a good day to you.
You too.
All right, Mrs. Janu? Is she there, Mrs. Janu? Okay, I believe that call did go over, so I, if I could just ask you to please set the timer.
Yep, well, I was going, see, I was going to read my comment to everybody regarding, regarding our calls and I, yeah, so we, you know.
Yeah, no, I know, we're still, we're trying to work off of this virtual and it's so hard, we're losing track of some of this, so my apologies as well, all right.
Yeah, I know, I didn't, yeah, I'll set mine this time and yep, and I will chime in if the three minutes is up.
Thank you.
I just didn't have the heart.
Yeah, I heard it.
So let's, let's try again, we're going to try Myrna Hamadi again, I, I think I must dial the first time. Give me one second.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Mr. Garcia, I'm with the Crestwood Board of Education. We're calling you back, you wish to address the board and our administration. I just wanted to remind you that there is a three minute time limit for your presentation and I would like to give you that opportunity to go ahead and begin addressing your concerns.
First of all, I want to thank all of you for what you're doing, everything that you're doing is really appreciated and I'm not going to take long, just like the previous two callers mentioned about the time left for the school year is so short for everyone to get it, you know, start something, try to go back and try to adjust to their new routine and the new schedule and the new group A, group B, and then they have to alternate the following week and everything. So that's by itself, like the first moment I heard about that we have an option to send our kids back to school, I was like, definitely I'm sending my kids back to school. I had to quit my job to be able to stay at home and I don't do a good job being a mom and a teacher and, you know, while not doing my own job to start with, but when I looked at the plan that was sent to us, I don't think this is going to work for my own family, you know? But then I, we are going to be forced to choose between either sending them or keeping them home, but keeping them home is not going to look the same way it looked those past six months, which is, I don't see how it's going to be easy for everyone to adapt for the kids, for the teachers and for us. And I totally understand where this concern that some kids really need to go back to school because of social emotional support and because some parents cannot provide the support or the time or some parents need to go back to work or for any other reason. So do we have a number of these kids whose parents cannot really stay with their kids or cannot really do this anymore? Because what I would think and what I would suggest is that if this number is the only people who really have no choice but to send their kids to school, why not try to make a plan for these kids because they have to get into the new routine while everyone else stay with the old routine they were going through? I don't know if that makes any sense to anyone. But I mean, instead of just shifting the whole system, all the kids in all grades in all the buildings, try to shift into something new and new routine and new schedule, why not focus on those kids who really need to go back because they have no other choice?
Okay, all right.
So that's my concern and that's my point. I mean, we only have three months left if we can, you know, just save our resources, save our time, use that resources and time to plan something more efficient, more, makes more sense for all the families starting fall.
Okay, Mrs. Hamadi, I believe, yes, no, thank you and thank you for reaching out to the Crestwood School District in regards to the concern that you have. If you, if you have, and I believe Dr. Youssef, are you there?
I am, yes, and I.
Would like to address with you a couple of points.
Yeah, I took down those notes and Mrs. Hamadi, thank you, that, that, what you stated is something that we can, you mentioned a couple possible alternatives and I think when we get our survey data back and we get the numbers, that'll help us like dive deeper into who really needs the face to face, but your points are well taken and I have put them down in my notes.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you very much for reaching out and contacting us and if you have anything that is directly specific to your children, please do not hesitate in contacting their school and speaking with their principal at any time. Again, we really appreciate you for contacting us and sorry that it was, it's taken so long for us to reach back to you. All right, thank you, Mr. Green. Mrs. Janu, was that the bell that I heard in the background? I wasn't sure.
Yes, that was the time.
Okay, then I did, okay, then I did hear it. Okay, I believe we have one more caller and then we can go back to the reading of the last of the comments. Mr. Green?
Yeah, we do have a few more, let's try, I just have one name, Reed.
Reed, okay. Hello?
Hi.
Hello? Hi, my name is Mr. Garcia, I'm calling from the Crestwood School District in regards to a concerned comment that you have to, to address the Board of Education and I would just like to remind you, okay, I would just like to remind you, there is a three minute time limit, but we would like to give you that opportunity now to address your concerns.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Hi, I understand parents concerned for the children to go back to school. There are private schools, you know, they're full-time students, I do have a child attending preschool full-time while still wearing a mask. I understand for safety reasons, but when you have good, you know, atmosphere and, you know, I appreciate the school taking extra precaution and following the guidelines, but I think children should go back full-time. If the parents choose not to go back for their children, that's their decision and the school already accommodated those children for them to stay online. But I feel like if the parents wish for their students to go back full-time, that should be available. Maybe they could go Monday through Thursday. Uh, maybe they could go Monday through Thursday. Um, and, you know, I understand they came up with this tentative plan, two days a week. If we could bump it up two more days, you know, just online is really tough at home with the children, especially if you have more than one child attending online school, uh, sometimes with the internet access, um. So that's my concern, just if we could have that school go back, and I know everybody's aiming towards that. Um, they're looking, you know, for the parents to go ahead and have their kids, but if we could have those all, um, you know, like a full-time, it would be great, especially for the elementary school kids. It seems like the high school students don't want to go back. Um, I, I have a high school student, and he, he's already telling me I don't want to go back. The, I have the elementary school, middle school, they want to go back to school. I understand the, uh, situation, yeah, but if we could probably go ahead and do full-time, I know the, the surveys are being mailed out, and I really appreciate it. Uh, thank you so much. Thank you.
You're very welcome, and we appreciate you contacting the Board of Education. And, uh, we do ask that, once you receive the, uh, survey, that you please, uh, you know, make sure that you get it done as quickly as possible and return that back. Uh, if there are specific accommodations that you will require, we also ask that you do not hesitate in reaching out to your son's or daughter's, uh, schools, and we will try to do our very best, uh, to ensure your safety, uh, and, um, provide a, a, a good school environment for your children. All right, thank you. Um, Mr. Green, our next call?
Okay. Now, this one, this one hasn't given us a name.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mrs. Janoon?
Should we be asking them to, you know, please state their name prior to speaking? I think I would.
I totally agree.
Yeah.
I believe they were providing us with their name. I have Blake.
Yeah.
Uh, Hamadi.
Her name wasn't.
And Reed, which I'm sure was, I'm sure probably was Rita, but yes, we can, I can, I will make sure that's addressed, uh, at the time of the call.
Thank you.
Yeah, these are just the names that have been typed into our form, so, yeah, it's probably best to go back to the old way of doing it like that. Here we go.
Okay, and this caller's name?
Oh, I don't have a name on this one, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, you did say that. I'm sorry, my apologies. Hello, this is Mr. Garcia from the Crestwood School District. And may I?
Yeah, hello?
Speaking with. Yes, hello.
Yeah.
My name is Mr. Garcia. I'm calling from the Crestwood School District.
Yeah, my name, yeah, my name, my, yeah, my name is Mira. I'd like to ask, uh, some questions about, uh, the meeting.
Okay, that, just one second, please. Can I, can you just restate your last name again?
Uh, the children to go back. Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry. Yeah, so I would like to ask some questions about their meeting.
Okay, yes, uh, but I, I, I didn't hear the name, so my apologies. I, could I just get the last name?
Yeah, my name is Mira. M-I-R-A, last name, R-A, T-R-A.
Okay, uh, and just as a reminder, uh, there is a three-minute time limit. Uh, our secretary will let, let you know when that time has expired, but at this time, we, uh, you can go ahead and address the Board of Education.
Okay, okay. Um, so, um, I would like, uh, to ask, um, uh, what day, is the plan decided yet or no? And what day is gonna be, actually, I have three questions, so, um, so the first one, um, is the plan decided yet or no?
Okay, so the plan has not been decided as of yet. Uh, there is a tentative date, uh, that is set for, uh, back to Youssef, March 1st. I don't, I think that's just the date that everything needs to be, uh, set in, uh, set up. Uh, and then your last question, go ahead.
As of now, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, as of now, the tentative, not decided tentative date is March 15th. March 15th, but that can change.
So the plan isn't, didn't, so the plan didn't, uh, decide, yeah, it depends on, uh, on the, like, kids, or the, not, parents, how many, how many, like, kids?
Mrs. Berry, I, or, or someone there, Mrs. Berry or Mrs. Janoon, it, it's very hard for me to understand. Uh, I don't know if I'm just having a breakup in the line, but if someone could please help clarifying.
Yeah, she was just asking, does it depend on how many kids want to come back, so?
Okay, so that question there, I will defer back to, um, administration.
No, that, that's not gonna be determined, determination, but how many kids want to come back may adjust our plan.
Okay.
Okay, 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 so if, um, so, uh, like, the, how many, like, days, the one who decides to come, uh, gets, uh, to school, how many days they gonna, like, divide the schedule between online or, like, face-to-face? Like, if somebody gets, uh, wants to school face-to-face, um, how many days he has to learn, and, uh, how many days he has to have online?
So.
Okay, and then you had another question. Uh, I'd like to get all of your questions.
My apologies, my apologies, Mr. Green.
No, that's okay, that's okay. Uh, and it, was there a last question that you had, or was that the last one? I apologize.
Okay, so, um, yeah, if kids decided to come back, how many days, uh, he's gonna stay at school, like, face-to-face, and how many days he has to, um, to, to study online?
Okay, I think I heard, how many days and how many days online, um, Dr. Youssef?
So every student, if they choose the hybrid format, will be two days face-to-face, one week, three days face-to-face the next week. And then it'll alternate the days that they're online, but there'll be five days of instruction. So it'll never be less than two days face-to-face, and it won't be more than three days face-to-face.
So a normal, uh, so, man, yeah, there would be a normal school week.
Okay, okay. So three days, three days a week, three days a week, the next day, um, you go switch, uh, so it's gonna be that group between Group A, B, or C, or no? Only Group A and B?
If we, if, yeah, if we have fifty percent or less, it'll be eight groups A and B. Anything over fifty percent will have to go to three groups, A, B, C.
Okay, okay, and do they, uh, do they have, they have the, do, uh, have the same teacher, uh, it's gonna be the teacher, um, they have the same teachers, how can I divide the teacher between online or class?
Same teachers.
Same teachers, okay. So forty-five minutes online and forty-five minutes in class?
Correct. That's three minutes, Board.
The only reason I didn't.
All right.
Because we were answering the question at the same time, so.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're, you're very welcome. We appreciate you contacting us, and if you have any other questions or concerns that you wish to have addressed, uh, feel free to always reach out, uh, during our board meetings, or of course, reaching out to the school of, uh, where your children attend. Thank you, and have a great evening. All right, Mr. Green?
Okay. The next one will be, uh, Samar, I think we tried her earlier, but seems like she's available now.
Okay. Samar.
The subscriber you have dialed is not in service.
No.
No, okay.
Right.
Are there, are there any other callers?
Yeah, there is one more, um, this one looks like Shiraz, let's see.
Did you say Shiraz?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, is this, uh, Shiraz? Hello, is this Shiraz? Hello, is this Shiraz? Hi, uh, my name is Mr. Garcia. I'm with the Crestwood School District, uh, the Board of Education, and we are returning your call. You wish to address the Board of Education this evening?
Yes, thank you for all your hard work.
Uh, oh, I'm sorry, I, just as a reminder, uh, there is a three-minute time limit, uh, but at this time, we, uh, ask that you please ask your question.
Okay, yeah, thank you for all your hard work, everybody. Um, so just so I'm clear, their online teacher now is going to, um, be their teacher if I decide to send them to the hybrid, is that correct?
Uh, Dr. Youssef. Sorry, Dr. Musallam.
That's okay. Yes, they would be the same teacher that they currently have.
Okay, so, uh, my second question is, I, I'm leaning towards sending them to school because I'm really concerned about their social, um, development, and I would love for them to be interacting with students, but it seems like they, um, that is, that is actually going to be limited, so that way we can have the, the safety precautions implemented, so, um, can you talk about how we were, how we're going to facilitate that social development and, um, also, somebody had mentioned that the, the three times they touch the mask, you know, they're gonna be reprimanded or, or whatever the term was. Um, I, I am concerned about that because they're in the instructional support program right now, and it's very rigid. The rules are very rigid, and I don't think it was, it's really conducive to, you know, um, just promoting their social skills or, um, and I know that wasn't the point of the instructional program, but I don't want that to, to happen to them in their, their school environment, because we want them to feel happy and, um, and safe in school, but they're going to be asked to stay at their desk all day and separated from the other kids. Um, is that correct?
Uh, a, and before that question is answered, are there, are there other questions that you may have so that we can allow you to ask all them within that three-minute time limit?
Yeah, kind of within the same vein, are they going to have, um, physical education, are they gonna be able to move around, and also, if the weather permits, recess?
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair, if I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can I, can we, uh, ask what group, uh, what, I'm sorry, what age group we're talking about?
Oh, yes, um, second grade and fourth grade.
All right, second and fourth grade, and then what I'd like now is an opportunity to get your, your, all your questions, uh, have been asked, and I'd like to get to you, uh, some answers if we possibly could, and that answers would, or those answers would come from our administration. So, Dr. Musallam?
Uh, the first thing I want to go back to, I want everyone to understand, no one is gonna be reprimanded for touching their mask three times. I want to make it clear. We are going to teach students proper protocol in this COVID environment, and we're gonna need support from the parents to support us in that process. If we don't get support from the parents and we, we're having trouble, like, having students follow the rules or the protocol, there will be further conversations with the parents to help us on that matter. In reference to the stringency of the class, yes, we do need to maintain some stringent guidelines when students are face-to-face because we have to keep everyone in a safe environment. But students will have the ability to move around, to do different things, and, you know, as long as they maintain the six, maintain six feet. Moreover, you are correct. The students will be focused more with the students that are in their current classroom. Will there be recess? Yes, there will be recess. Students will be able to go out, students will be able, but it's gonna be regulated, and what I mean by that is, you're not gonna have fifteen classrooms out in the recess yard at the same time. You know, each classroom's gonna get their recess time, because we have to regulate how many kids are outside at the same time in order to ensure that they're not all gathering and doing what kids usually do at recess time. So, and what I mean by that is, we're not in normal circumstances, so we're gonna have to make these adjustments. So we're gonna do everything in our power to allow the students to have that social interaction, which they will. It just won't look the same as it would have pre-pandemic. I'm hoping that answers the questions, and if there's anyone from the elementary team that wants to add to that, please feel free.
Will there be physical education gym class?
Of course, there'll be phys ed, there'll be art, there will be music, just, yes, of course, and it's funny, one of our phys ed teachers, her and I were in line together to get the vaccine, and she was telling me about all the things that she wants to do when the kids come back. So, uh, there will be phys ed classes, yes.
All right. Okay, uh, was there, was there? Okay, thank you. Um, this is, I, I believe it was Mrs. Shiraz, I pronounced it correctly. Okay, thank you very much, and again, uh, thank you for reaching out to the Board of Education. Uh, we appreciate it. If you have anything that's, uh, specific, uh, please never hesitate in reaching out to, uh, the school that your sons or daughters attend. Thank you for calling. All right, Mr. Green?
I thi, I think that's all the, uh, phone calls we have right now.
All right, so Board, uh, what we can do now is move into the portion of, or the remaining, um, messages that have been mailed in, or sent in, I'm sorry, okay? So we make sure that we cover everyone.
Okay, I'll try to, um, try to breeze through them if we've already answered those questions, um.
Okay.
This, this is a new, here's a new question. Will Board members be visiting the schools to see how return to school functions in real life?
Uh, can I answer that, or Mrs. Janoon, would you like to?
Um, Mr. Garcia, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Berry.
Um, I do want to comment on that. Guess what I did today? I went to a building to check on the safety protocols. I walked the halls, I made sure the tape was down, the signs were there, the, um, um, uh, drinking fountains were closed down. Um, I was very impressed. So I took that upon myself. I went into the building, and, you know, because these are, this is what we need to do, so we have everything that we need to know in place to make this decision. So, yes, I did do that. I checked the distance, um, I know Mr. Jacobs has talked about measuring every classroom to see what the capacity is, um, or what the capacity could be in each classroom, so, yes, we are involved in that way. Um, you know, so thank you for asking that question.
And, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Janoon?
Just so, um, everyone's clear, I have children in the district, so it's not that I'm saying, you know, I'm, I'm going, you know, I have kids, so anything that I, any decisions that I make, they're going to affect my children as well, so it's, it's, it's not just I'm saying, oh, hey, you know, I'm, I'm just gonna sit at the table and, and decide for you what's gonna happen to your kids. It's a decision that I have to make for my own children, so going through the buildings is not, it's not because I'm going in just to, you know, it's to see what's really happening, so, yeah, it's easy to sit at a table and have a conversation and, and discuss things, but to go in and see it is, is, takes it, you know, where you, you know what's actually happening, so. When I said, I, I meant it, I, I really did, I mean, I, I would happily go in and, and, and I do, I, I think everybody here knows, I, I, I do go into the buildings anyways, because I'm, just even as a volunteer, I enjoy doing that, so.
Yes, thank you, and, uh, so for the, for the message, uh, thank you to that person, yes, our Board is very active. Uh, we do engage with our, our, our schools, and, uh, you know, we work collectively as a team with our administration. All right, um, Mr. Green?
Yes, you mentioned air purifiers will be installed in the classrooms without natural ventilation. What do you consider natural ventilation? If a room has windows, does that mean that that room will not receive an air purifier?
All right, uh, Mr., well, you know what, I'm gonna defer over to, uh, Dr. Musallam. I'm going to defer over to, did we lose him?
He's muted, yep. You're on mute, Doctor. Yeah, my screen was not letting me change it. Mr. Jacobs, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that according to CDC guidelines, if there is a window in the room that creates natural ventilation, where in turn, if there's not a window in the room, then we, we need to add an air purifier. Am I correct, Mr. Jacobs?
That's, that, to the best of my knowledge, that is correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr., uh, yeah, Mr. Sabah?
Yes, I have a question. Uh, Mr. Jacobs, um, I understand the window piece, but it's winter time. So I don't know if the windows need to be open for circulation, is, is this part of the CDC guideline? Uh, how, how is that taken into consideration?
Uh, well, uh, the, it, it's only been taken into consideration in the event that these UNIVENTS aren't, we can't get them to open up enough to allow the, the, the local fresh air to be coming into these rooms. Um, and, you know, it's, um, yes, it, it is gonna be winter out, uh, and it is gonna be chilly, but it won't, it won't take too long before spring's here, and we'll be able to get some fresh air into the buildings. In the event, in the event that these windows can't be open, we'll, we'll most likely have to address more air purifiers, uh, in the rooms, uh, to satisfy some of these needs.
Do you have a number of rooms that you are looking at for purif-
Do you have a number of rooms that you are looking at for purifiers and ones with windows that you won't need purifiers for?
As of right now, I've gone through two schools and I've got fifty-one classrooms right now that I will have to get air purifiers for.
Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you. Uh, Mr. Green?
Yes. Can parents select which hybrid group their children are in due to their work schedule? Does the district have enough substitute teachers to sub for teachers? I think we talked about that.
Alright, so the, um, Mr. Musalem for the first question?
Um, the first question was in reference to parents choosing based on the work schedule.
That's right.
Yes, so at this point. Once we identify where the students will be and we share that with the families. We're going to have to work on that on an individual basis with each school to make sure that we can. Do the best we can to help accommodate, but it's not guaranteed. Just because it's, it's hard for us to say yes or no on that answer right now. Because as numbers come in, the more students that want face to face, the harder it's going to be to make those adjustments.
Alright.
Okay.
Alright, Mr. Green?
Will the SAC program be open and on what schedule?
Um, I believe so. Does someone want to go into detail on that one? Are we talking about the preschool program?
That's, that, that's the SAC, SACC program, I'm abbreviating it there. School aged childcare.
Yeah. Oh, you're on mute, Mrs. Reiki.
So, in a, in a normal year, we operate that schedule. Um, about an hour before students report and then we go till six PM. So I think we're going to have to look at the numbers of families that would be interested in that care to see if it's feasible for us. And if, and how it will work with our transportation situation.
Alright, okay, Mr. Green?
Okay. I appreciate the two week break from face to face learning after spring break. Will students choosing to travel or fly on planes during other times other than spring break be required to stay at home for two weeks?
Um, the answer to that, according to the CDC guidelines, domestic travel does not. Request that you stay home, only international travel. So we're going to be requesting that anyone that travels internationally updates us. Um, we are requesting that people that do travel. Um, we're hoping that people aren't traveling during instruction time and, you know, their kids are in school. And because it's a spring break and the whole district is going to be observing spring break, is why we follow that. I will be honest, for us to track who travels and who doesn't travel without notifying us will be very difficult. But if we are aware of people who traveled, we will be asking that they pay very close attention. To their uh family members to ensure that they are, do not have any symptoms.
Okay.
Alright. Schools don't have air conditioning. It already gets hot, extremely hot in the classrooms even without masks. How will this be addressed?
That is going to be um, an issue that we are going to have to work with when the time comes. Um, we're hoping that um. We won't have ninety degree days in June. I'm just going to be honest with you. There's not much we can say about that. Uh, just so the community is aware, if we were to add air conditioning to just our smallest elementary school. You're looking at a ten million dollar project almost. Um, so our schools weren't built for air conditioning unless if we have extensions on them where in turn you could run the ductwork. So adding air conditions to our schools is, is, at this point, is not an option. And I do apologize for that.
Alright, uh, okay, Mr. Green?
Thank you for working through all of this. My only concern is the predetermined bathroom breaks. How can we assume the students will actually be on that predetermined timeframe? If not, how do we accommodate them?
Oh. Well.
I'm thinking.
This is going to be one of those things where, you know, we're going to be working those logistics out as we go. I mean. The whole idea behind it is, is that if we put students on a routine. And they understand that routine, it's just like now. I'm going to go back a step, if, if I may. Pre-pandemic, okay? Pre-pandemic. There should have been, and if there wasn't, there will be in the future. Protocols for when students use the restroom and how students use the restroom in reference to time of day, so on so forth. And that's just normal functioning of a school environment and or day. With this process. It'll allow teachers, again, and staff and administrators and custodial teams, everyone. To work together to identify what is going to work best for kids. It's not going to be perfect. And will there be uh situations where someone's going to have to use the restroom outside of the designated time? One hundred percent, those situations are going to occur. But I, I know I sound like a broken record and I hope the teachers don't get upset at me for saying this, but. We got great people in this district who have really adjusted with this pandemic. I really believe they'll continue to adjust. And they know uh that, and, and that if they need additional resources, we are there for them to support them in that process. That's affordable.
Alright, okay, uh, Mr. Green, next question?
Okay, here's another question about air conditioning and the heat in the spring and the fall, but. This one adds, will the students be able to refill their water bottles with cold water?
Uh, yeah, we will be, we will be supplying and having water available in the schools for the students, yes.
Okay.
Alright.
How, how would drop off and pickup look like for kindergarten? Are there designated doors and are adults going to? Are adults going to enter the building, I'm assuming parents?
Yeah. No, parents, I, I hate to say this and I do apologize because I'm all about our parents being in the schools and everybody knows that. From day one that I became superintendent. But during this pandemic, we have to limit how many people enter our buildings. Um, all of our administrative teams, preschool, elementary, middle school and high school are developing and have. Plans for entry doors, exit doors, dismissal times. And all of that, and that will be shared with parents well in advance before we start with any plan that is approved.
Alright.
Okay. Uh, here's a question. Is it true that a number of teachers caught COVID while working in the buildings without kids?
Uh, for the Crestwood schools, I want to say that we, I do not believe that we had any outbreaks. Um, I, I, you know, can't speak on whether or not teachers had COVID or not, but. There were no cases of COVID that were. Caused due to interactions within our school buildings. Dr. Lazar, am I missing anything or anything you want to add?
I believe there was one, but we were able to contain it pretty quickly. It, I don't, in, um. I'm trying to remember, I think it, it spread to one, two at the most within that building. Um, but again, we reiterate, uh. For staff members who do come into the building to ensure social distancing and maintain mask wearing at all times. And so if we, we've been able to manage very well when process and procedure is followed closely. But it was, it was controlled and it was small. It wasn't, it was not a massive outbreak, no. And there was just the one incident. Full transparency.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, Mr. Green?
What happens with GSRP students?
Uh, Mrs. Densnick, if you want to answer that, or Mrs. Reiki?
So I've come up with a plan that should work for most families if they so choose. Um, it's along the same lines as the elementary plan.
Uh, okay. Alright.
Okay. How will the bus route be? Are kids from different schools going to be picked up by the same bus?
So our transportation will focus, well, first off, those that currently receive transportation will continue to receive transportation. And once we have our numbers, that's one of the reasons why we're also doing home addresses for those that choose to return face to face. We will be adding runs to the bus runs if need be. Um, and our transportation department, what will happen is in between every run. They will be uh wiping down every seat and every student will be wearing a mask on entering, during and exiting the bus.
Alright.
Okay, this, this question is just asking for a little clarification on the. Student expectations and consequences if students do not follow the precaution guidelines. Earlier, you mentioned if they don't follow rules, they could be removed from face to face instruction.
Just to be clear, I'm going to reiterate, we follow what's called restorative practices. Mr. Rashid Baydoun and Mr. Leon Wallace, they're, that's their role. Mr. Rashid Baydoun is a nationally certified restorative practices person. He, we, we're lucky to have him. The point that we're trying to get across everyone is, it's not going to be based around you didn't follow the rules, you have to go. The purpose behind restorative practices is that we teach. We uh, we update, we support, we help, we bring the parents involved in the conversation. But we also want to make it clear that if we get to a point where even with the parent's support. The child or the children are not following the rules, and this is after multiple attempts. There is a possibility that we could ask that child to stay home from face to face. Through restorative practices, the purpose of restorative practices is not discipline, it's to teach. And that is something that's new to our district. So rolling it out during the pandemic is a little difficult. But it's an opportune time to truly use it.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, uh, Mrs. Berry?
I'm fortunate enough to work in a building where we actually have three-year-olds that are there. And I was amazed. All fourteen kids came in. And it has not been an issue. Those three-year-olds have had their masks on. The nice thing is that these children are used to this. They know that they can't go into stores without it, they can't go into markets without it. So a lot of these kids are probably already in the habit. Um, I think we will be amazed. If we decide to go back, I think that we're. Putting too much emphasis on things that we might not have to worry about. So hopefully, that's how it turns out. Thank you.
Yes, no, I agree. Uh, I, I think, you know, most society is very familiar with what is going on and the fact that, uh, you know, face masks are, are important and. Uh, all the states are, of course, in some degree mandating and stores are mandating, so, um. Yeah, the masks are important and, and as Dr. Yusuf Musalem has said, it. It's not about punishing, it's, it's educating. Alright, um, Mr. Green?
Yes, this is just a comment. Thanks to each and every one of you for all you have done this year. This has been very hard for everyone. There is no right answer and everyone, not everyone will be happy with the decisions. I myself just think we should start fresh in the fall. I feel the children already have their retune, routine going. Why disrupt it? With technically less than three months of schooling left. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay, next.
I'm just uh editing as I go here. What does the teachers' union say about this? I can't see them agreeing with all of this. Are you prepared for a teacher strike?
Oh, Mr. Mr. Musalem, I'm glad that you're going to be able to answer this one because I'm, 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 I'm going to be, I think we were all very happy with the response, so please.
Uh, so I can just say this, and Dr. Lazar. Listen, I, Dr. Lazar is the one that on a multiple occasions will tell me, Yusuf, I got this, don't worry about it. And I appreciate that. And I trust her on it. But what I can say is this. Dr. Lazar and I, specifically Dr. Lazar. Have been in constant communication and conversations with all unions all the time. Are there members of each group that may not like the direction? Yes, of course. That's normal. We have said from day one, we are not going to make everyone happy. We understand that. But I mean, I'm going to throw a shot out, okay, to the ninety-five percent and more. Who have said to us, we will do whatever it takes to help our kids. The only thing that the union asked us. And we were perfectly fine with that and the board actually supported it beforehand. Was they wanted us to wait to get the vaccine. And we said, of course. That's an, that's a simple request. So we have a very, very, very positive working relationship. I don't even like to say we have a positive working relationship with the union because then it creates this administration versus union. We don't have that here at the Crestwood schools. We're one team. Okay, we're one team. We respect our staff, we respect their opinions, we respect what direction they want us to go. Because they respect to do what's in the best interest of kids and we all do it together. Now, are there some people that aren't happy? Of course, it happens. Even within the administration team, we have our arguments. But we argue towards what's in the best interest for children. And as long as that's the focus, we're always going to be successful. I'm sorry, I can go on and on because we got a great relationship with all of our staff members in the Crestwood School District.
Thank you. And in regards to that comment, uh, I believe that it's very evident that everyone has worked together to make, uh. Uh, to see this plan, make it this far. And, uh, as Mrs. Berry says, nothing is destined stone, it's just tentative, but. Uh, many, many people have worked hard on this. So thank you. Uh, Mr. Green, next?
This, this is a comment, um. If a teacher gets, if, if a teacher gets sick with COVID. And dies, will going back for three months be worth it? If, if someone was to die from COVID, will, will it have been worth it to go back to school?
I'm not sure how or if the board or should even answer that question. Uh, I'm, I'm going to look for some advice from our superintendent. Uh, but I will say that, you know, we, we are under guidelines to put plans in place to have something. Um.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
We wouldn't want to see anything that happened, but uh, I'll, I'll refer to Superintendent Musalem.
Mr. Chair, you made a very good point there, something I didn't mention yet. The fact that we have to have a tentative plan in place. So that we can review what our options are before we make a decision. And therefore, God forbid, God forbid, God forbid, something like that was to happen. But we are working towards a tentative plan that will be beneficial for as many people as possible.
As possible, thank you. Alright.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Green?
What's the point of going back on the fifteenth for two weeks than to take, than to have off for two weeks? Why not start going after spring break?
That is something that we are considering and looking at.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Green?
Alright. Um, regarding the MHSAA rules. Students attend school. And participate in sports and arts if they are not attending in person.
Correct, because according to the rules, as long as you're attending, if it's online or face to face, you still are eligible for MHSAA uh activities.
Okay, um, next question?
Okay, just a comment about, um. The kids are losing out on their school experience and, um, it's a huge issue for their social well-being. Um. How many students will be in the classrooms? Is there a person watching kids at lunchtime?
Okay.
There will be supervision during lunch, yes.
Yeah, alright.
Um, about special need kids, how do you keep the masks on kids who have sensory issues and can't keep six feet distance?
And that's where our special education teams and the I, with their IEPs and so forth. We will be, you know, through the MTSS process, identifying procedures and policies to support those students who have special needs. So that is, that is something that we work on with the families.
Alright.
Okay, um. What happens if? If, if the parents aren't truthful on the daily? i- if the parents aren't truthful on the daily health survey a- and send their kids to school? If a teacher notices symptoms like coughing and sneezing, will these kids be sent home? Would you require students with allergies to test and confirm that they have allergies before coming to school with symptoms?
So again, through the, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, I, 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 no, I, I was just going to comment, I'm, I'm hoping that parents would be as truthful uh, to taking those surveys for the protection of all, not just, just their families, but then I'm, I'll, unless you'll.
Well, I was just, yeah, I was just going to say, we, we gotta work as a community when we have to work with one another.
Uh, Doc, 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 sorry.
I'm sorry, who's got, who just requested this?
I was just, it's, uh, Dr. Lazar.
Yeah, Dr. Lazar, thank you.
Uh, just really quickly, and, and I'm not going to speak too much on it, but I did meet with the district nurse today. Um, and, uh, another one of her colleagues to go over those specific situations. Um, so the district nurse will be helping to manage those situations, and she actually did a walkthrough in most of the buildings today. I'm not sure if she got to everybody, um, but she did talk to the principals to identify the isolation rooms um, as to where students would have to be, you know, pulled out of the general population of the schools in attendance in order to quarantine until their parents could come and pick them up if there were symptoms of anything going on. And so I just want to put it out there that, um, the district nurse has been working with administration and, and with us on mitigating and, and helping us to, um, uh, track those issues as well.
All right.
Mr. Chair, can I comment?
Mrs. Berry?
I know that, yes, there was a large purchase of, uh, thermometers made, correct, through the district? So I'm, I'm pretty sure that they will be located at every.
Every, 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 yep, every office has multiple, there's still multiple ones in storage as extra. We made all these purchases back in the summer because to prepare for whatever direction we were going to go. So we are prepared, Trustee Berry, and I appreciate you bringing that up because it, this is, it's common knowledge to us, and we forget to reiterate that to the community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Berry. Uh, thank you, Dr. Musallam.
Mr. Chair.
Um, Mrs. Squad, I believe.
I, I just wanted to ask Dr. Lazar, uh, a quick question and follow-up of what she said. So if a child exhibits, uh, symptoms and the district nurse or the nurse checks them out and quarantines them, um, I, I guess a fear would be, um, and especially if she's not the one to be able to actually look at them. What if a child is exhibiting like a cold or something and like they don't get placed in another room where somebody might have exhibited symptoms of maybe COVID or, or flu or something else? I, I guess what I'm getting at, we, we're not putting them together to where they would infect each other, right? Okay. Thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Green?
Yes, uh, I'd like to thank Dr. Musallam and the board for everything you've done. We're a very lucky community to have you all. I was wondering if you could please keep SST for middle and high school students additional help after school online where teachers are available so they can drop in and get additional help. It has helped my son tremendously in high school and was a highlight of your current plan.
And that, we do have that, well, it's not called SST, but the high school does have every day a block set of time that teachers can invite students in for, well, when I say invite students in, I'm talking about in this format for additional support. And in the middle school format, the enrichment's going to be built into the schedule. So it's going to look a little bit different there. So there will be opportunities for additional support, yes.
Okay.
All right.
Will students be provided an option to get a COVID vaccine?
At this point, the district isn't involved in that. We're going to have to wait for, um, the health organizations to roll out the vaccines to the general public. So we hope that will happen sooner than later.
Than later. Thank you. All right.
Hmm, this, this is just a comment. Um, there've been many studies about screen time in children. Having a child in front of a screen from nine fifteen to two o'clock is not okay.
We understand the screen time research. It's just we're in a situation right now where we're trying to adjust how we're getting our instruction across.
Okay, here we have a question from a high school senior at Crestwood High School. Wondering what you have planned for seniors. We are the last to return to school and will only be in person for less than a month. Are there any?
So I, I can tell you this, and Mr. Fabris could add to it if there's anything he wants to add, but I do know that the, the high school team is putting together to ensure that our seniors have as much as possible senior experience as they can receive. And that's going to involve different activities and different things as such.
And I, I, I do believe that had been noted by you, uh, a couple of different times. So thank you to the senior for asking.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Um, is it Mrs. Berry?
No, Sue.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mrs., I'm sorry, Sue. Mrs. Kaminsky?
No problem. I just wanted to remind all our listeners right now, hearing all these different opinions to now appreciate how hard any plan had been to try and make. And, and how much that some people feel very strongly that they want their children to go back. They want their children to wait. This is not an easy decision for any of us. So please understand that we are hearing you. We are listening tonight. We're all taking notes. We haven't made a decision and we're sorry that everyone can't be happy, but, um, COVID wasn't planned by any of us.
Thank you, uh, uh, thank you, Sue, uh, for, for stating that. I appreciate that. Uh, uh, was there another board member that had a question? No? Okay, uh, Mr. Green?
Yes, where do the teachers go during lunchtime?
Same as they do now.
Yeah, that hasn't changed. All right, uh, Mr. Green?
Uh, this, I think we answered this, um, elementary schools utilizing parent hel- helpers as support for a lot of functions. Will that be able to continue?
Yeah, at this time, we're going to be limiting who is entering the building to reduce, um, infection, possible infection rates.
Okay, I, I don't think we asked, um, will children have recess and who watches the children during lunch?
We'll have lunch supervisors, we'll be doing some different types of events during lunchtime, and yes, they will have recess.
Okay.
All right.
Specials, we've talked about that. There will be P E art, et cetera, correct?
Yes, correct.
All right, Mr. Green?
Yep, I'm just, I'm just editing as I go here, um.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I think we've covered a lot of these. We're almost to the end.
Okay.
Um, just flipping through the questions.
Mr. Chair?
Um, Mr. Sabah?
Yes, while Mr. Green looks for, uh, uh, more questions, I just want to reiterate something that I think many of us have thought and, and many of us have said in the past. We can't be ready for every situation. And I think Dr. Musallam has prepared the administration for as many possibles, uh, as, as they can cover. I hear a lot of questions about, you know, what if this, what if this, what if that? You know, at the end of the day, the safety of these children is the most important thing to all of us. And one of the callers earlier had mentioned the safety of the families. That is a huge consideration for those that have elderly grandparents that they visit on a regular basis or elderly family members or neighbors. So people have to take their own consideration into making these decisions. But please understand that there are so many different variables. And the majority have been taken. So thank you to all of those who have brought those forward today for giving us more reason to think about this.
Thank you. All right. Okay, um, I believe, Mr. Green, you.
Just a few more, here, um. This, this is really, uh, a comment, um, for people who can, who are concerned about social life for their kids, think about what we're risking if we don't open schools versus if we do open. I work as a research associate directly involved in COVID research, and the new mutation is to be taken seriously. So please, the year is almost done. I believe we should have patience for a couple more months, and we shouldn't waste resources and time to open schools. Thank you.
All right.
Uh, let's see. Yeah, I think we're getting a lot of repeat questions, um.
Okay.
So I'm almost at the end. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Uh, Mrs. Berry?
I just wanted to ask Mr. Green, are they sending these questions in as we're online or were these sent in previous?
Uh, they could send them in previously, but, but the questionnaire stays open during the meeting. So, um, we're right there. Two more questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I, I'm not going to miss them, Mrs. Berry.
Yep, we're going to get them all.
I, I, I'm adhering to the rule. Let's hear from them all. If we're going to hear from five, let's hear from all seventy-five.
Uh, a couple of comments and a question. First, I thank the board, the administrators and teachers. They should all be commended for the work they're doing. None of you or us ever expected to be doing all this, not in a hundred years. Second, to all the parents out there, I say, please be patient. While the board in front of you may not, may not have devised the most perfect system, they are trying to develop a system that can work. You can bet there will be adjustments along the way. This is all new. This leads to my question. Are you collaborating on solutions with other neighboring or or afar school districts? I sure hope that not every five-square-mile district is reinventing the wheel. Also, have you visited schools that have been open and observed their protocols in action or solicited feedback from their administrators? Thanks for all you're doing and be safe.
Thank you.
If, if I could just say real quickly, yeah, just real quickly, the answer to that is yes.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Uh, Mrs. Berry?
Um, I'm fortunate enough to work, work in a school. So, uh, yes, I have definitely learned a lot. I have been observing the protocols. Um, I've been through the whole process. Um, I've even had to take an online class to make sure that I'm following the protocols. Um, that's part of going back. Um, so yes, uh, there, some of us have been through all that, and thank you for asking.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Chair, may I, may I make a statement if that's okay, real quick?
It's Dr. Yusuf, uh, Dr. Musallam.
You know, I, I want the, I want the whole community to know that there are seven board members, and I've spoken to every single board member that has contacted me or asked me questions in closed session and open session, who have, who have maybe stopped by the office. And we have one board member who is part of the school reopening plan for the entire county. That's Trustee Alzayat, who works for the county and works for Homeland Security. And so we have an inside scoop. And I, and, and I, and I say that proudly because if I, if any of us go in the wrong direction, Trustee Alzayat's going, what are you guys doing? You can't do it that way. So I want the community to know that you have seven board members, and I'm not just saying this because they're on the screen. I've said it all the time. You have seven board members that are actively involved in this. And trust me, there's times where I'm like, okay, I'm on it. You know, and, but they're doing it for the right reasons, and I do appreciate them. But I want the community to know your Board of Education is actively involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, all right, so we do have one more written question, um, clarification on where the teachers eat at lunchtime. At the elementary level, the students will be in their classrooms during lunchtime. So where do the teachers go for lunch?
I just think they're going to have to think a little bit outside the box, and we're all going to have to be flexible as these are not normal times.
Okay, we do have a few additional, um, folks that want to be called if we can squeeze them in.
Uh, absolutely.
Right, let's give it a try. Uh, this is, um, Crestwood High School student with no name here.
Okay.
Okay, let's, let's try another.
All right, thank you. Is, is this the same caller, Mr. Green?
Uh, this is a new caller. This is, uh, there he is. Hello?
Hello, hello, my name is Mr. Garcia.
Yes, uh, hello.
Hello, my name is, yes, excuse me for just one second. Uh, my name is Mr. Garcia. I'm calling from the Crestwood School District Board of Education. Thank you for taking the opportunity to give us a call and, and wanting to inquire in regards to a question that you have. Um, I only want to remind you that you do have a three-minute time limit, uh, but we do want to hear from you. So we're calling and we'd like to hear your question.
Okay, uh, good evening, uh, board members. First of all, I want to thank everybody for giving us the opportunity to share our thoughts with you tonight. And like you did not just make the decision and ignoring all the parents, so I really, really appreciate this. Uh, my first concern is you did not answer the most important question that comes after safety. How is the teacher of the class going to teach two groups of students, one online, one in class? This is very, very important for me to make a decision. And the other thing, me personally, I cannot send my kids to school because I have a lot of allergy, um, uh, like health issues, uh, but that's going to put my kids at disadvantage because they are online. It took us so long to adjust to the schedule. Now it's putting pressure on us as a parent, in the kids, and all the teachers. So I didn't know, like, we still have only three months left for the school. Uh, why all these changes hap- changes happen at this point, considering the situation with the COVID? Now, my last question is, how are you going to support these kids emotionally if they go to school and they're not allowed to socialize? They have to keep their mask all the day? And, uh, not being able even to go to the bathroom if they want? So how is that supposed to support these kids?
All right, well, what I'm going to do is give the opportunity for the administration to answer a few of those for you. And if I could also, could I just ask your name for the record?
Yes, uh, my name is Manal, Manal Badiya, and I have two kids go to the, uh, Highview. And just one thing to mention quickly, now you want my, uh, my son to stay on the computer, talking to the, to the teacher behind the mask. Now, how is that benefit my kids? Especially, as you know, a lot of the kids at your school speak two languages. So it's really, really important to watch the teacher's facial expression. Because our kids, like my son is, uh, grade two, he already missed half of the year last year. And this year, he's just depending on his teacher to learn everything. So the teacher's going to teach him behind the mask. Like, I don't know, you, you know better, but how is that going to be, um, beneficial to my kids?
Okay, well, we definitely want to give you, uh, the opportunity to ask your questions. So thank you for asking. And then we also want to have the opportunity to address your concerns.
Thank you.
With that, yep, oh, absolutely. No, you're very welcome. Thank you, Mrs. Vadia. And at this time, uh, uh, Dr. Musallam, uh, do you think you may be able to answer a few of the questions? I believe there were three in total that, uh, were being requested.
Yes, and thank you for the questions. Uh, first, again, we, with the, back in November and December, when we knew the vaccines were going to be part of the conversation, we believed that it was time to start preparing for students to start coming back to school to help reintegrate back into a somewhat normal setting. Um, in reference to socializing, we believe that the students will still be able to socialize with other students in the classroom, just wearing a mask. Um, and, uh, to maintain six feet of separation. Um, I think a lot of us have been doing that on a daily basis when we go to the grocery store or wherever it is. Um, and the other piece too is, again, I have a lot of faith in our instructional team. Plus, uh, we are going to be offering and, uh, giving additional resources to support them in this transition of instruction if we go this route. Um, I, and, and I want to reiterate, you know, back in August. Um, I, and and I want to reiterate, you know, back in August and September, you know, the question was how are we going to do this? And we did a great job. Now the next step is, you know, how are we going to make this next move? And I really believe our teams are going to do a great job again if we choose to go that route. Again, this is all tentative. We're hearing what everyone is saying and no decision is going to be easy decision to make.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mrs. Vadia, we greatly appreciate you taking the time out to reach out to us. Uh, and as if I, as I have told all the other callers, uh, if there's anything else that we can do or you please don't hesitate to contact us at the board uh, as well as making sure that if you have anything that's specific to your uh, sons or daughters to reach out to their school administration.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Have a great evening. Thank you for calling. Okay, uh, Mr. Green, was that?
Uh, Justy Janoon, Justy Janoon has a question, Mr. Mr. President.
I I was just gonna say, I know there are those masks now that like um are being made by like Ford Motor Company for like the hearing impaired where they, you can still see it's it's um clear in the front. You can see the face, you can see the facial expression, you can see their mouths, um, the teachers mouths as they speak.
The face shield.
Yeah, well, it's not a shield, it's a mask.
It's a mask on Amazon.
Well, it's also producing it, but.
So if if we, if we could just one at a time, because I I I know we're, I have difficulty hearing when it's it's more than one. Um, so Mrs. Janoon, please finish. You have the, you have the floor.
Yeah, so that's, that's first. Um, and then I also am hoping that our teachers are I know like even from my own children that plans are being discussed with the kids. I'm hoping that our teachers are making our kids feel comfortable with what the plan is. Um, I know my kid comes back with concerns and I think part of these things and as they get relayed to the kids and then go back to the parents, it's I'm hearing some of this, the parents say the same things and it's kind of concerning to me that maybe the kids are relaying messages to the parents and they don't have the full story. Or, you know, and and it's not intentional, but just that if teachers, you know, giving what they have heard the plan is going to be and then the kids are going back to the parents because I'm, I'm feeling like the kid, the teachers are, the kids are, I'm sorry, the parents that are calling in are saying the same thing and it's and it's almost like they, we don't know exactly what the plan is. So we're working it out, but the concerns that I'm hearing are the same. But like I said, I know from my own kid, when she comes back and she asks me a question, I'm like, I have to calm her down and say, just relax. That's, that's, it's something that we're discussing, but so I'm just hoping that our teachers are being careful as to what they relay to the students because the kids are not going to relay the message back to the parents in a way that is either the whole story or, you know, it's coming from a teacher to the student, to the parent and I just want, I want our teachers to be more mindful if that's, if that's what's happening.
No, I, thank you, thank you for that comment. Um, and I know that the administration is working diligently with the the unions and um, you know, to 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 make sure that those issues are 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 covered and I agree with you. Sometimes uh, the information that gets back to a parent um, may not be quite as accurate. Um, so thank you. I believe I also heard, uh, was was there a comment, Mrs. El Zayat, that you wished to make? No?
I just wanted to say that, um, yes, Mr. President.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I just, I just wanted everybody to remember that a lot of time and effort went into this. Um, keep that in mind. Taking kids back to school is not something that we're taking lightly. Um, also, I want to remind everybody that you don't know if something's going to work until you try it. So in the world of emergency management and preparing for emergencies, I can tell you that plans are written and uh, you know how to adjust them once they're implemented. So I know that Dr. Musalem is going to make sure that if something isn't going right, it's going to be changed. I know that as soon as we hear that, you know, something needs to be adjusted, we'll make the adjustment. So that's all that I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Uh, Mrs. Berry, did you also?
No, I'm also, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, this is Yusuf. It's okay if I just add something real quick. My apologies.
Dr. Musalem, absolutely.
Thank you. I just wanted to add to that if there's any staff member at any time who feels their voice wasn't heard, please reach out to Dr. Lazar and myself, your building administrator, and to Mr. Jim Studdard. Mr. Jim Studdard is the president of the Crestwood Teacher Federation. And Mr. Jim Studdard knows that Dr. Lazar and I always have an open door. It doesn't mean that we're always going to agree and or do what is suggested to us. But it's a process. And through that process, we're going to have to make a decision and or bring tentative plans to the table that hits as many targets as needed in order for our entire district to be successful. Crestwood Schools is like a chain. We are as strong as our weakest link. And we must continuously strengthen every link with each other's support in order to be that chain of success. So please reach out to us. We are always available. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but I just wanted to state that as well.
No, thank you. I I appreciate that. And I think that goes back to uh, letting our community know that uh, this is a, this is a team effort. This is definitely a team effort. It's not something that uh, is done by one, it's done with a team and it's in the best interest of all. And uh, and I, and I think uh, you know, all of everyone, uh, my colleagues and and administration, the unions, uh, everyone, the parents, uh, most importantly, for all wanting to be part of this process. And I think um, Mrs. El Zayat said it very well. Uh, this is a tentative plan that's being uh, pushed, or I'm sorry, let me restate that, that is being uh, provided for everyone to take a look at. And uh, we can put things in place and wherever it needs to be tweaked or changed, uh, we will have that opportunity to make sure that we make um, uh, it's satisfying for all. Okay.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mrs., uh, I'm sorry, yeah, Mrs. Flog?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to add, um, I know we haven't sent out the uh, presentation uh, yet and you have the uh, FAQ page, but with all the material that we've um, just went reviewed now in the last couple of hours, I I guess my request would be whatever is not on there, if we can add on there before distributing to the community.
I do believe that the administration will make their, the final uh, determination um, and address all and uh, the questions and comments that have been discussed. And yes, I I don't think anything is going to be sent out. Uh, what's the word I'm looking for? It it's all going to be very concise information, uh, and accurate information for all. So yes, thank you very much for the comment. Okay, uh, what I'd like to do is take this opportunity to thank uh, our entire staff, our principals, uh, those that sat from the board and helped in part of this process in making sure that we can devise a tentative plan that is is satisfying, but most importantly, uh, safety conscious. What's been said is is very important. We haven't dealt with anything, not me personally, and I don't think any of us sitting at this in this virtual meeting has had to ever deal with anything like this. I believe if my math is correct, Dr. Musalem, it's been a hundred and three years uh, since the this, the last pandemic that has affected the United States. And here we are, the Crestwood School District, uh, making an attempt to devise a a tentative return to school program of that will, number one, be safety conscious for all that attend school within the Crestwood boundaries. Um, so I thank all of you and uh, of of course, we will take all the information for the consideration and we will try to move forward as quickly as possible. Um, to make sure that we can do the best for all of our students as they uh, return to work or return to school and uh, and then move forward. Uh, with that, uh, I don't have anything else. Uh, Dr. Musalem, is there anything else in the presentation that you feel may have been left out?
Uh, no, I just want to make one final comment real quick. I apologize. I know for a fact that there's over ninety-five percent of our teachers, instructional staff, non-instructional staff, that are working diligently to do whatever is in the best interest of our children. And I know that everyone is working hard. And those ninety-five percent are the ones that I know for a fact will show up and do everything they need to do. And I know that there are so many more people that are itching to have our children back. So I appreciate their due diligence and I appreciate the time that those subcommittees put into place. Because those subcommittees, again, I want to reiterate, everything was heard and everything was listened to. The end result that brought this tentative plan forward was based on the information that was provided. Yes, there were some recommendations that did not come part of this tentative plan. And why? Because it didn't fit the needs for the entire district. So I want to reiterate, we understand that now everyone's going to be happy. But we also understand that we're all going to work together, no matter if it's the plan we agree with or don't agree with in order to put our students and our staff in the best situation possible. And this Board of Education, I appreciate all that you've done. The times you put me straight and the times that you pulled me along because you helped me get through this process as well. So thank you. And thank you to Jim Studdard and his team as well.
Thank you. All right, uh, with nothing else there, what I would like to do is give the opportunity to our board uh, to have a, I'm going to say five minute recess.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so what I will do is right now, I'm going to save it at seven thirty-three uh, that we return back to the table um, at seven thirty, I'm sorry, seven thirty-eight, seven forty at the absolute latest so that we
Eight thirty-three.
I'm sorry, as you can see, I'm uh, my time, my time is different.
Different time zone.
I'm in a different time zone.
Yes, yes.
Time zone and and the weather conditions here are bad, so uh, my apologies for being tardy. But anyway, we will uh, take a five minute recess, return back, we'll say eight forty. And that will give everyone an opportunity and we will turn to go into a uh, board session. So, uh, Mrs. Berry, Mrs. Berry.
Can we vote to move out of the study session?
Yes, I was, I was going to do that too. So I'm just trying to get my other piece of paper here. Uh, so we've covered the cover comments, we've taken that. And at this time, I'll ask for a quick adjournment.
So moved.
Okay, so we have an adjournment.
Second.
By Mrs. Berry. I I I heard a second, is Mrs. El Zayat?
Yep.
Okay, so I heard a support for Mrs. El Zayat. We will see you back here at eight forty, your time.
All in favor?
All in favor? All right, okay, we'll see you back in five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.